Okay. That's maybe. Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll start by talking about. Meeting logistics. Anyone who's joining remotely, we ask you to change your name. Display on your screen to your first and last name, so we know who's talking to us and who we're talking to. Anyone who speaks, we would ask you to start by stating your name and where you live. We'd ask everyone to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments. Jermaine to the topic at hand. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. Once you're called on the may by the mayor, you may make a statement or ask questions, but we want you to get all of your. Statements and questions out at one time, so that as the general council general, you we does not engage in back and forth at at those times. And anyone who speaks out of turn. Makes non-german comments or goes over your time will be called upon to adjust your comments or behavior. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Any comments or suggestions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we move the necessity resolution to next meeting. There's. Couple of errors in the wording. I'm gonna make sure I get it clean and correct.
Okay, great. We'll do that. Anything else? All right, we'll consider the can the agenda. Approved. Next up, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not. On the tonight's agenda. As with other sections of the meeting, we. Require you to be recognized by the mayor, and then we can will ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. During the. For people, we've got a new setup for the. For the room here, and so we have a table out front for people who wish to if we're in person who are wishing to. To address the council. And so the floor is open for people. Dave Bellini, I see you're up first, so. You can start out again. We're talking about. Topics that are not on tonight's agenda, so that means not. Not the budget.
Not the budget. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't find the agenda, and if there's handouts, I couldn't find them online. So if there was something that was going to be presented by the city manager or the mayor, I I couldn't find it. I don't know if there is. I'd like to thank you. I noticed you too late that you're holding it at the high school, so I. Or I would have attended in person. Thank you for doing that. It makes it more accessible. I think it's a better room. So not about the budget. That's later on, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we will be. The main topic tonight is the public hearing on the budget.
Well, I thought this is not the public hearing on the budget, then. This part.
Right.
All right. Could could we see? The budget survey, the narratives that were written? I noticed that wasn't included. Remember that budget survey a while back? It was kind of a difficult survey where you rank things in order one way, and then you rank them in order another way. But there were there were questions on there that asked for a narrative answer, and I think that would be. Helpful to find out where people were coming from. So if that's possible, I would appreciate that, and.
I believe they're all posted on the city's website.
Yeah, okay. Well, there you go. I'm just a computer failure. Sorry about that. And I I just want to thank the. The city council for. Moving in a more fiscally responsible direction. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else online who wishes to be heard during general business and appearances, please? We it'd be it'd be best to use your electronic hand on the screen because I'm I'm pretty sure I'll see that. Anybody in the room who wishes to address the council? Steve Whitaker.
Well, I made it on time. I need to. Turn this volume on because I'm getting the echo while the machine. Not supposed to touch it. Couple of things I've. There's overdue records requests for the Good Samaritan correspondence around why they didn't open on the sixteenth as we. The night we gave them forty five thousand dollars. And. The terms of the memorandum of agreement or understanding with the churches. The. That's like nine hundred and something dollars a day where when combined with the state funds I raised with with the commissioner of. Children and families who's. Providing the other funds that we didn't provide. But my point is, and I've made it again and again, when we hand money out to nonprofits with no conditions on transparency or accountability. Here's a perfect example. Here we are in a real tight budget, and we just hand out forty five thousand dollars, and we don't get what we're paying for. And so the folks they're they're. Folks are crowding in the library, and people want to complain about the libraries. Ask. It's like they're picking up the slack for y'all's dysfunction on providing a place for the unhoused to to gather and or, you know. But they're fighting and. Arguing and. Cussing each other out and getting banned from there, etc. So. Again, y'all created this mess by neglecting it for so long, and I will not let you forget that. And and I think your toilets committee, when when did it last meet? There's a there's a simple example, the public. So City Hall. Is. Says signs on the door closes at four thirty. The bus doesn't pick the folks up going to the shelter till six or six thirty. And. We made no provision, even when it was zero degrees for where these folks are going to stay indoors for two hours. There's no reason that with the hallway doors locked down to the council chambers. That the front clerk's office lock, city manager's office lock, those bathrooms could be accessible to those folks waiting indoors. This is just simple sympathy logic. Responsibility compassion that we put all over in our strategic plan and then don't live up to. Similarly, there's discussion about building a budget from the bottom up or having engaging with the public earlier. Because by the time the budget reaches this stage, and you've got a tight timeline of two weeks to get two public hearings in, it's pretty much. Tinkering with icing on the cake. If we're going to remodel the budget, you need to take public input and and even start from. A zero-based budget or take public input a lot sooner in the process, because it it really feels like a. Going through the motions here, especially when I made a bunch of comments and specific suggestions, and they didn't get. Discussed even.
Thank you. So anybody else in the room who wishes to be. To be heard. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. No, I don't see anything on the consent agenda. Oh, there is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. We'll then move to the main item on the agenda tonight, the first public hearing on the. On the budget, I will declare the call, open the public hearing, and we'll start with the presentation. Folks, can you hear over there? Okay. This is a new setup for meetings in in this room, and. To me, it look it seems better, also.
Okay.
I I hope to hear from people if there are issues.
What's that? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members of the public. This is our first public hearing on the budget that. I guess you preliminary, well, at the last meeting, you gave us direction to reduce the budget by a certain amount of funds, four hundred and nine thousand four hundred. So this is a budget. Showing those reductions. It's this is the longer presentation. I'll shorten it up for next week, but this is kind of going back to where we were at the beginning, just for. Every refresh everyone's memory and for folks that are coming into the process now, kind of how we got here, what's on our table and where where we're at. So we always start with budget goals, and those are to implement our strategic plan. Priorities, increase the investment in the capital plan, prioritize public safety and public works, and keep the tax rate as low as possible. Not going to read all these, but we do have a strategic plan fairly lengthy. It's got five main categories. We'll go through those and then strategies in each one. And obviously, as we built the budget, we we kept in mind to this. Although certainly the financial resources this year were pretty limited in terms of being able to address a lot of the issues. So why was the budget so? Tough this year because it certainly was the hardest one we've had in in my time, that's for sure. So our operating costs, just, you know, when we start. With everything on the table, we're up about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We cut a bunch of things last year that we, I think. Hoped were going to be one-time cuts and could be restored, and those were close to nine hundred thousand dollars. Our capital needs pent up was about one point two million dollars. We had wage insurance wages up. But really, the big one, of course, was health insurance up twenty three percent for five hundred and eighty thousand. And that are related employer costs, FICA Medicare overtime, and then we had our grand list appeals. Settlements, things we, you know, people appeal their taxes. They had tax abatements, and we had the National Life Settlement, so that all. Hit our grand list, our budget by about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. So we started off with. Kind of in the hole, about three point seven million dollars from last year. So if we, you know, meeting that we needed about two point eight five million in new tax dollars, which would have been a twenty. Four percent increase, which you don't think anybody was seriously considering, but that's that's where we started. So that was the challenge. There were a lot of things, decline revenues, decline delayed inflation. Last year, we had a very large school increase. Which meant the overall tax increase in the city was high, so people are feeling that. We have the lingering impact of impact of the reappraisal. So folks who just had their, you know, their their values raised and then just got the big tax bill last year are feeling it. We continue to have increase in service demand, so even though funding is tight, the the work doesn't go away. So how do we deal with that? And then we have a very large number of projects on our plate, including all our flood recovery. So trying to make all those things happen with very tight funds. So our initial budget showed us up. Well, this is the current one.
Sarah.
This is the new one? Yes, okay. So our our newest budget shows that we have our expenses up five percent, our revenues up seven percent. So. The tax dollars needed at this point are only two point three three percent for the city's portion of the budget. One point eight five of that is for capital and one point four seven percent is for the. Operating, the rest is invalid items. So and then here's where the rest of it is. So we have the library mosaic, the, you know, change, and of course, the community fund, which was in the budget we moved. So we obviously want to be sure to count all of that as, you know, apples to apples. So that's where we're at. You still say six point nine four, but it's actually three point six two. Sorry for that. So taking a look at the last five years, again, not going to walk you all through this, but this just shows where we've been, our various tax rate, and then the proposal this year. Would put us at three point six two percent increase. Looking again, just this is another way of looking at that. You can see the property tax, the ballot items, all the different things, including the drop in the grand list. And the final results in in the bottom. Our funding basically is about sixty five percent for the property tax for city operations, another three percent for ballot items. And then really our our fees governmental intergovernmental generally means grants, fund transfers, or funds. You know, where the water fund pays for something in the the general fund or something like that. You have all this information. This is just taking a look at each departments and each categories where where the funding. Is is coming from. Generally, about forty percent of our budget goes to public safety, about thirty four percent goes to. Infrastructure, both maintenance and actual capital infrastructure and those kind of things. Another twelve percent for. Community services, another thirteen percent for government services. So that's the big picture of where the money goes. There is one proposed bond, and you will be, as I said, we put off the necessity resolution, which doesn't mean that we need. The truck. It means that we need to borrow. We don't have cash on hand to buy it. Just every year, people ask, why do we have a necessity resolution? It's required for bonding. But basically, this is the ladder truck. It was last purged, just, I think, in the nineties. It has certainly outlived its useful life. I think we've been talking about this with the council for about five years now, the need for this. So it is the time has come. Probably would not, even if we were to pass it, pass the bond this year. Be at least a couple of years before we actually see the truck, so we wouldn't start paying on it until we got that. There's a huge backlog. So one of the reasons we are. Bonding for it now is to make sure we're in in the queue. Our infrastructure goal, we just have a lot of projects. Again, they're they're all here. Going to go down through just so people can see the kinds of things that we are trying to accomplish in each of these goals and fund with this budget. A very large amount of work. And our housing goal, the big one, of course, is the Country Club Road project. In our rebuild and resiliency goal, we have. Again, different things there, and a lot of them are FEMA projects. Advance the economy. We've got some outdoor rec tracks, Dog River Path Extension, those kind of things, and of course, a decision about the rec center. And public health and safety. We're still looking to find permanent shelters, still trying to find bathrooms, public safety, radio infrastructure, the fire tower we talked about. And implement the Maple Plan. We actually just spent three hours as a team on that this morning. That'll be on your February agenda, I think. And understanding what that means for our staff to be able to to do all the work that's involved there. In addition, we certainly like to have responsible and engaged government, and so these are some of the things that we are working on with with all of that. Big one there, big health insurance reviews, given the the cost on. Increase. So that's a sense of what's on the plate. Like to notice, mention this because people, I think, sometimes don't think about it when we talk about all the things the city has and does. These are all the. Facility facilities that we collectively are responsible for maintaining, running, operating, and keeping up. So to speak. So this is the kind of the the breadth of what the city does. And then just to add to that, we have fifty two miles of road, forty miles are what we call class two or three. Twenty three miles of sidewalk, forty plus retaining walls. We have water distribution mains, sewer mains, stormwater mains, district heat pipes, twenty bridges. Fifteen vehicular and five pedestrian, two hundred and eighty six street lights. So these are all things that the city takes care of and has to maintain all the time and and things that our people do. And our service demands haven't changed. Our police calls are up, dispatch calls are up, fire calls are up. The weather, roads of my, all those things don't change. The capital funding means we have more projects, which is good. But it also means we have to be able to do them, and we are certainly passing fifty million dollars through our hands. So our finance department is managing fifty million dollars in grants, funds, revenues. School funding that we collect and send to the school and including eleven plus million in FEMA projects and about three hundred permits handled. So this is. Big picture snapshot of the work the city is doing, and I only mention that because. A lot of times people will say, you know, if business doesn't have money, they have to cut back, and that's true. But it's often they don't have money because their business isn't as busy as it used to be. In our case, our business is as busy or busier than it's ever been with all the projects we have and all the service calls, but we are still. Not in a financial position to sort of fully deal with that. So I think that's just important that that the business hasn't gone away. Recreation participation is up, senior center membership is growing, parks have a steady use. So just again, indications of demand. When we presented the budget, we made clear to you that there were some things you will have to do. Some might be on the ballot, some will be things you have to do after the budget passes. So in March, once we've gone through, so we are increasing the DID rate. Up to cover from five point one five to seven point six to cover the costs of mobility or live and related activities. We'd increasing the ambulance contract rate to our neighboring communities. We would be implementing a no transport ambulance fee. Increasing our ambulance fees to match the region. Right now, our fees are lower than some of our neighboring towns, so we think there's no reason to leave money on the table. We'd be eliminating the sprinkler tax credit for commercial buildings that are required to to have it. And we would be moving the community fund appropriation to the ballot, which we've already talked about. So those are things that this budget is predicated upon. So. We we talked about some of these cuts. So when when we started with the. That go back to that twenty four percent, that large number of money, these were the first revenue adjustments we made. And then we cut really all the things that we had cut last year, did not put back this year. Again, I'm not going to dwell on them, but here's the list of them. I know there are people here to speak in support of some of them. These are things that that we, I think, would all love to support. Specifically call out the Parks AmeriCorps, just that is the the folks that do a lot of work in the parks. Continuing on with a lot of various operating costs through. So even before you got your proposed budget, a lot of the things in. City budgets that already been scoured pretty closely. And lastly, we had originally thought we needed three hundred and fifty thousand and had gone to two hundred and sixty thousand in the CIP. And then we had also cut positions of Parks and Rec full-time position and Senior Center full-time position. Consolidation of finance positions and the assessors assistance of five people, leaving those lists in as four positions. So that's how we got down to our initial budget proposal, and then with your direction last week, we've added to that. We've eliminated the position of sustainability and facilities coordinator. We've eliminated the position of executive assistant in the manager's office, consolidating that with our human resources director. We're choosing not to fund the seventeenth police officer. That was also not funded in this current year, so that was an add back. And the police chief can speak to that. He's had difficulty filling that. We have eliminated. Purchasing as an electric vehicle cruiser. We're still buying two cruisers, so the service is the same, but we'll buy two hybrids instead of one hybrid and one fully electric. That extra forty thousand was the cost of the additional electric and the cost of the charger. So it was. It was a way to reduce costs without changing without and still meet the the operational needs. Trim some overtime from fire and DPW to to make the number hit. So that was the four hundred and nine thousand four hundred. I would note with the police officer that we left fifty thousand in for community outreach. We are hoping to work with Washington County Mental Health to provide sort of non-police outreach to folks in need. If that doesn't work, another opportunity would be to hire the seventeenth police officer about halfway through the year. You know, in January, about this time next year, so we'd have the funds for half a year, so we'd be going in, so we would have the full complement. And part of the issue here is just the difficulty hiring police officers. And part of the issue here is just the difficulty hiring police officers. We've really had a huge challenge, even hiring the 16th this year. So rather than take up budget funds or something that might not get filled, we thought this might be a way to to reduce the costs and the tax rate. So what's left in the budget? I just noticed this in 2019, I made a little list of what I thought we had were deficiencies organizationally and at that time as facilities, net zero, human resources, communications, data and performance and a social worker. Two of them are now gone from the budget. HR has been dropped to 50%. And the social worker is probably leaving, their funding runs out in September and they'll be leaving. So that should probably have a line crossed through it too. We do have the community outreach money. That is the picture of our social worker there in the in the photo. So generally, like always, we are a personnel heavy operation. We have people that plow snow and dig water lines and answer police calls and fire calls and ambulance calls and answer dispatch calls. So we're very heavily personnel dependent. And that's why those costs drive our budget so much. Just taking a look at our allocations, you can see where they have changed from last year to this year and over the last several years. Tax bill, if you just took a look at the big breakdown of the tax bill, you can see how much the average home is paying for each particular service in in here. Capital funding, we had originally planned 260,000 with the 40,000 coming out for the cruiser. It's only 220,000. But just because that was reduced, we are still keeping all of the paving and all of the infrastructure work. Not that didn't change at all. It was simply on the equipment side to change what type of equipment we purchased. And then we're still planning to continue the 260 annually to stay on our path. So employees, people like to talk about that. We are down now five employees from FY25. And we were down, excuse me, from FY24. And eight, we're eight and a half percent reduction since FY24. That's what I'm trying to say. We we dropped five in each of the last two years. And we are 111. And for some reason, FY19 keeps coming up as a year to measure against. You know, we've got more employees since then. That year we had 112.81 employees and this budget has 111.96. So we would be about one employee lower than that benchmark that we've heard that we were 10 above. So that's where we're at. This is just the employees by fund. And I only mention this because some employees are funded not by taxes, not by the general fund. So even if you cut certain positions, they affect the water rates or sewer rates, but they don't necessarily affect the tax rate. So just about 78% eight of our employees are general full, that 78%, 79% of our no, that's wrong. 78.8 of our FTEs are funded by the taxes, the general fund. And then by department, this just shows the same mix of employees by department. No surprise, police, fire, public works are the bulk of our staff. That's really where the work, the biggest amount of the work is and where the biggest amount of expense is. So looking at the budget, looking at our our goals, building and sustaining sustainable infrastructure. There's a lot of things that are still in there. The capital plan is still increased. We have plans for major projects. We have cut the sustainability and facilities coordinator. For create more housing, we've continued our staff or actually the possible development agreements, you've chosen not to do that. So we could turn that to red too. But but certainly the direct funding for the Housing Trust Fund and for Country Club Road that was in last year has been removed. For our resiliency, we've cut the sustainability position. We have no funds for MEAC, GMT My Ride, and many of these other boards, and now the EV Cruiser. Advance the economy, we've kept the Montpelier Alive funding in, but moved it to the Downtown Improvement District so that it's funded by the the district that it serves. And really everything else is gone. Both improve public health and safety. We're keeping the CIT program. We still have the mental health outreach. We have, you know, the social worker position is gone. We've cut a senior center position. We have reductions in recs staff. So and that is after a rec staff cut last year as well. And we are again consolidating folks in our admin functions. That's how it would be in city manager's office, finance, HR, those kind of things. So we've taken what were nearly six positions, combined those into three. So that's it. So what are the positives of the budget? I I hope we would consider it positive that we got to a 3.62% tax rate increase. That was the goal somewhere. That was the number we were trying to hit. We are fully funding fire DPW at FY25 levels. We've added the mental health funding. We've added the capital plan. And we've kept some of our basic, yeah, keeps our basic services for residents in. I'm not saying that it won't be difficult. But most of our basic structure is still in place. Oops, why am I not? There we go. Budget negatives. Our rec parks, senior center and finance are stretched extremely thin and will need to revise expectations for services and DPW is is still down a position that was cut last year. Police is still down a position cut last year. Our admin consolidations will have a big impact on the required work. The cuts we made last year are now basically built in. Some of the the software cuts we've made are reducing our ability to be fully transparent to the public as much as we'd like. And, you know, seven people are losing their jobs. I'd focus on this too. You know, there's a lot of frustration, I think, from our team about this, not because you have to make budget cuts, but just their concerns about the ability to deliver services to a level of expectation. And the impacts on this will be really hard that we're going to do this now and that later in the year. I know, you know, you haven't really taken the opportunity to talk to any of them. But they are all here and I think they would be happy to discuss these impacts with you. Because they are, they are feeling it pretty, pretty profoundly that they are going to be responsible for something and it will be an expectation that things will still be the same when they can't be. So it'll be good for everyone to understand what that really means because, you know, we will be doing all we can to be as innovative and creative as possible. But the fact of the matter is that there are certain things that will just, you just can't do with less people. It's just the way it works. So what are our longer term strategies? Obviously, we need to look at health insurance. It's obviously statewide problem, a national problem, but really hard in Vermont. We're a small state, small insurance pool. We have a lot of mandates in our health insurance system. Certainly consider additional department consolidations. We've made quite a few here and then looking at our fees and rates, what what those can be. So next steps, we have questions and comments tonight. We have one more public hearing next week. And then after that, you will approve what goes on the ballot and we'll have town meeting day on March 4th where the voters can speak. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Our department heads are happy to answer any questions. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share this.
Thanks, Bill. I'm sure council members will have questions and comments, but since we're here for a public hearing, I'd like to start by opening the floor to members of the public to either ask questions about the budget or about what you just heard from the city manager or to or to make comments based on about the budget and what you just heard. And I see we already have a couple of hands raised in Zoom land. So Zach Hughes, call on you first.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of, I have a couple of things. One is I'm going to emphasize this again, and I don't know where it can be addressed, but if your cut of 40,000 for the My Ride goes through, is there a backup today? Is the state gonna come in again? Or how's that going to work? I cannot emphasize this enough that there's an issue with this. The hospital is on a hill. There's appointments that have to be done up there. I'm concerned unless there's some sort of backup plan. And I'm Zach Hughes in Montpelier. I'm sorry, I didn't identify myself. So I just want you to keep that in mind and maybe I have an answer down the road. It's $40,000. So I'm not sure why we can't find it. But maybe I'm missing something. Okay, that's number one. And number two, I had a question about the ambulance non-transport. Are you planning to charge $54,000 for that? Or is that a smaller fee? I was familiar with a smaller fee. And I think the homelessness task force will want to hear more about the social worker and the and the mental health support. So hopefully we get that at some point. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Briefly, the, you know, the $40,000 cut to My Ride was actually last year's cut. It was just on the list because it wasn't able to be restored this year. Fire chief is here and could probably answer the ambulance question better than me, but I think we are certainly not charging $54,000 for someone for non-transport fee. That is, it's a fee, I believe, that if somebody, if the ambulance is called, someone receives medical treatment but does not get transported, they still get, they get billed for the medical service that they received. Currently, we don't bill them unless we actually transport them. So our estimate of, based on the number of calls that we had that met that criteria, that's our estimate of the revenue that we would receive for that service.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, okay, I'm getting head nods.
All right. Next up, we have Dave Bellini.
Hi, Dave Bellini from the Corner of Liberty in Loomis. I'd like to ask questions or just illicit information about the big enchilada, the health plan, why it went up so drastically and has it been going up? It doesn't seem to get ever talked about. I don't see any analysis about what's been taking place. Did everybody go on Wegovy or were there specialty drugs? You know, from a few people that had a huge spike and there wasn't enough coverage. Was it inpatient hospitalization? Was it outpatient? What were the cost drivers? What has Blue Cross done? Because they're probably supposed to do some management of their fully insured plans, not just pass the increase along and pay claims like a drunken sailor. So I don't really see anything. Maybe it's out there in computer land that I can't find. I don't see any analysis, quarterly analysis about what's been going on and what the plan is in the future to attenuate or dampen some of these increases. I'm sure people are working on it. I just don't know where to find it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I can have our finance director talk a little bit more about that. I do know that we did bid our plan out this year. And MVP was the only other competitor and they came in higher than Blue Cross. So we did look for alternatives. There aren't a whole lot of choices, but I'll let Sarah.
We quarterly review our plan activity. Over the past 12 months, our plan activity has exceeded what we are paying in. So they aren't even making their, Blue Cross is not collecting their fees to do the work because our claims are in excess of what we are contributing. So part of that is that in driving the rate is our experience. The other part is there's a portion that Blue Cross is working at building their reserves back up that are inherent that we have no control over. We looked at other plans and the rates were similar to what we currently have. We have a meeting actually tomorrow with our ref to try to figure out how to bring these costs down, what our plan options are in order to reduce that. But currently it is based on our experience along with several other factors. And so, you know, we are working on it, but at this time, the 23% increase is the hand we were dealt based on our experience and it is similar to what the exchange experienced this year with a 24% increase. So we were not completely surprised. And at this time, there was not a lot we could do.
And Sarah, a lot of this is that that's what the Green Mountain Care Board approved this year, right?
Some of that, yep. I I believe it was about an inherent 7% increase for Blue Cross to recover reserves and they expect we will see that annually that paired with our core experience this year led to the higher rate increase.
Thanks. I'll just add too, because it comes up a lot, the opportunities for pooling are not really that existent in Vermont. For many, many years, people may remember there was a Vermont League of Cities and Towns pool of all the municipal governments. That pool has gone away. Most of the governments that have under 100 employees are in the exchange, which as Sarah mentioned, their their rates are about the same as ours. So it's not like they're really saving money, but that's where the pool is. So it leaves the larger communities on our own. And so we have a very small pool, which means, you know, some some bad experience can really skew the the pool. And there aren't a whole lot of choices. We're we're looking at them. Our our cost share with our employees for two-person and families is, you know, employees are paying 20%. That's the same as the state of Vermont. Our our single plans are the employees only pay 5%, but that cost of that plan is so much less expensive than the others. And the state of Vermont provides, you know, lifetime retiree health insurance, which we don't. So, you know, we are competing for employees in that field and our our cost share is on the higher end. I don't know of any municipality that has more than 20%. And certainly in our region, we're in the higher end. So when we are looking for police officers, firefighters, those kind of things, we are we're on the higher end of that. So we've pushed that. We've looked at, we're at other whatever we can do to to stop the bleeding. But it's been, this has been a, you know, it's interesting. We were looking at stuff from 2012 that Adrian sent out and, you know, they were talking about health insurance then as being a big thing. So it's certainly an issue.
For FY25, we did have a favorable increase. It was about 1.53% if I recall correctly. So when that came in so favorable, I, it's not a surprise that this year didn't.
And and Bill, in terms of the the caller's question about what we're doing for the future, all four of our collective bargaining agreements are up for renewal or renegotiation this year. And so I assume this is going to be on the table.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Thanks. Peter Kelman.
Peter Kelman, Mountain View Street. I sent a an email out to all of you earlier today in which I identified seven suggestions with the city council. Some of these might be used to restore some of the somewhat arbitrary cuts that were just announced. That that number, the origin of that number at the last meeting is weird. Some of these are things for the future because there's no reason to think that we're not going to be in at least as bad a position next year as we are this year. And some of these are just generally suggestions for what I think would be a better way to operate. So let me just, I'm just going to hit the the main points. I won't go into the underlying arguments. One, the city council should vote now to put a 1% local options tax on the town meeting ballot. The reasoning for not doing that at the last meeting just totally escapes me. The city council should instruct the city manager to explore every possible new revenue source and bring these possibilities to the city council for consideration for fiscal year 2027. It's too late to do that for this one, but let's get that started right now, new sources of revenue. City council should instruct the city manager to encourage all revenue producing departments to step up efforts to increase net revenues and perhaps to seek new ones. We are leaving money on the table. The city council, number four, the city council should instruct the city manager to expand or improve regional approaches to as many services and initiatives as possible and to seek state and or federal funding for such regionalization. I understand we are already doing some things, but we could be doing more. The towns around us are suffering and really if we share some of these things, it it'll be more efficient for everybody. Number five, the city council should instruct the city manager to engage all city departments in ongoing efforts to save money through greater efficiency and staff accountability. We might not have to lay off so many people if we make sure that the people are operating as efficiently as possible. Number six, the city council should hire an independent Number six, the city council should hire an independent consultant to make recommendations for reorganizing and reducing the absolute number of city employees and the cost of their salaries plus benefits, not just for this year, but for the foreseeable future. As Sal Alfano said last week, uh, business as usual is no longer a viable option for Montpelier or any other city and town in Vermont. Number seven, city council should instruct the city manager to make a more effective effort to educate and engage the voting public in understanding the budget and its implications for their property taxes. That whizzed through uh presentation that Bill uh just, just made the perfect example of how not to do it. Um, uh, so those are my seven large suggestions. The, the, the city council people have my detailed comments on that and I would certainly uh like to hear some responses or a positive or negative to what I've suggested. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Bill, do you have any? We, we talked about local option techniques here and maybe we'll talk about some more. Um, do you have any thoughts specifically about um new revenue sources or uh stepping up revenue production and whether we're leaving money on the table?
Um, well, a- as you know, at the beginning of my presentation, I talked about the need to up fees. We, we did scour for our revenues this year. We had a fairly significant increase in revenues uh in ambulance billing fees. Um, we, and then in my recommendations for things to do in the future, we're still look at our fees. Um, so, you know, I think we have to look at what produces revenue. Um, our ambulance is, is really our biggest operating revenue. Uh, things like rec programs and senior programs certainly bring in revenue and we've already sort of counted on them to cover the costs of a lot of those programs. Uh, and then there's always a fine line between that and keeping them affordable for our families in our community. So at what point do you do you price yourself out of the business? Our only other real revenue sources are, you know, building and permit fees. Uh, and um, we certainly look at what the sort of going rates are in other communities, but there has in the past been uh some reluctance from the council to make our fees too high because they wanted to make sure that we were welcoming to development and not discouraging people from participating in our programs by having outlandish uh permit fees. So there's, again, every, every policy has a, so. So we look at that and we do from time to time. I think we're fairly regularly scour our fees. Um, to make sure that we are collecting, we, we recommended uh eliminating the sprinkler tax credit, which is, would bring in another seventy one thousand in revenue, for example. So absolutely, I think anything we could do on the revenue side, it's just in Vermont, there's only so many things that, there's only so many ways a local government can raise revenues and we are, you know, we push them all, but we don't, you know, we don't charge a, a police call. Um, we charge for public records, but even then we try to be careful about that. Um, you know, what else do we, we charge? We got water sewer, district heat, those things are all user fees and, but those are, those are regular household costs too. Um, so.
And those go up at a higher.
And those go up too, yeah. Yeah, that's right, this year now, yes. So yes, I'm all, all in on revenues. That'd be great, but I also want to be clear that that is something we look at really, really hard.
Thanks.
And also I'd just say, I think I speak for the team, we'd certainly welcome if the council wanted to invest funds to bring in someone to look at our operations. We're always happy to innovate and look at something different. Uh, you know, we did do that a while back and then had a citizens report follow up on that and they had a lot of great suggestions, but there wasn't a lot of, you know, you need to cut a lot of people. Uh, but if there's, if there are better ways to do things, we're, we're, we're all open for it. We, you know, we want to do the best job we can too.
And if we were to uh pursue something like that, bring in a consultant to talk about uh, to, to examine our operations and talk about uh ways we could restructure. Um, do you have a ballpark guess of what that might cost?
I don't. The one in twenty eleven was forty thousand dollars. So probably upwards of that. I'd also say, and um, you know, we could talk about this a lot, but we might want to think about how we can do this. You know, I, I'm, 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 we're not afraid of an outside consultant. But if you actually took a look at the credentials of the team that you have here, um, they're about what you'd get from a consulting firm and we're actually putting it together to share with you. We have a lot of expertise on our team and I think they, as I said to you earlier on, nobody wants to ask for higher, higher budgets or higher tax rates. We know that we would be a hero by cutting it lower. So people are putting in for what they need to do the job that they need. And if um, you know, we'd be happy to work on a process and use our expertise. Um, but we need to take advantage of the folks we have and listen to them and, 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 you know, participate with them.
Thanks. Um, I don't see any hands online raised now, so I'll ask for, for people in the room. Why don't you come on up? Sorry? Okay, good.
Roger. I'm the first one, so I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, my name is Alex Geller, uh resident here in Montpelier. Um, thanks for your time. So I'm here, uh, I've spent fifteen years working for State of Vermont. Um, and in that, I, in that time of work, many hats across several agencies. And uh, the work that I tend to specialize in is change. So implementing modernized processes, how do we streamline things? How do we ultimately provide a better service for the hard paying taxpayers? Um, why I'm here, obviously, is for the budget, right? Um, we pay a lot. We get a lot. Uh, but we do pay a lot and I know that a lot of people are struggling to pay that tax bill. Um, but I enjoy these services. That said, I, I've used these services quite a bit. Um, and I would have to say from an external perspective, um, they're, they're dated, right? If I want to rent a spot at the park, civilians say, it might involve emails, phone calls, paper checks, stuff like this. But that was acceptable twenty five years ago. I don't think it's acceptable today. And that's not, that's not actually speaking from my perspective as a taxpayer or someone who's trying to rent the spot, that it's inconvenient, though it is. Um, it's not acceptable because that takes a lot of time at city hall to process all that paper, to scan it, to deposit it, to record it, to figure out the schedule, to do all that stuff. It's that back office stuff. It takes a lot of work. I know because I see it every day in a much bigger organization. Um, so, you know, I see that externally. I can only imagine what happens for those processes, those workflows that I don't see externally, those that are internal. Um, I wouldn't expect that they're any better. I'm sure there are bright spots. I'm sure there are ugly spots. No organization is free of them, right? So in the state of Vermont, it, it turns out that we pay for just standard Microsoft licensing. Perhaps City Montpelier does for its staff as well. Turns out there are a myriad of tools that are already licensed productivity tools that automate these processes that we just talked about. They can streamline them. They can, um, ultimately what they do is they allow staff to focus on far more important work, not the redundant tedious work that nobody enjoys. But they allow the staff to actually interact with members of the public, provide much better service. And in the end of these changes, these staff are usually much happier because they're doing much better work.
Um, that's your three minutes.
Well, I'll just close by saying that there is a recipe for this. I would highly advise against hiring a consultant. I think that's a waste of money. I would also push back on whether or not you have the expertise, because I see these processes and then you had the expertise, they would be different, they would be modernized. What I would advocate for is hiring one to two or allocating one to two positions as verified change agents, people that are highly technical and know how to lead projects and execute them. This is not a short-term strategy. This is a long-term.
Same thing, Alex. I, I'll point out that uh after a previous meeting, the city manager and I both uh contacted Mr. Geller and said, well, we we'd be interested in sitting down and talking to you about some of this stuff and you know, it's been all budget all the time, but we still intend to follow up on that.
Yep, yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. I really appreciated the suggestion and uh obviously, um, we're gonna, you know, we're, we're trying to get through the budget process, but obviously we, big changes in our admin operations. So um, we are going to be circling our wagons to figure out how we can do all of this stuff better. So, you know, uh, or at least able to do it because we, we do want to serve. So uh, yeah, we're planning, I was going to be part of my first call after we finished the budget with Alex and say, so I appreciate it.
Uh, Jeff Fitzgerald. You're muted so far.
There you go. There you go. Um, so before I, I begin, I, I just want to tell everyone that how much I appreciate all the time you guys have put into this and that I don't think everyone who's speaking is acknowledging what a terrible situation you're in. Um, and I get it. I, I, I totally, totally get it that it's almost impossible to make almost anyone happy right now. I mean, that's the sad truth. Um, but I am wearing my, my energy committee hat. And we've done a lot of good things over the last fifteen years and I just need the city to acknowledge what you're really doing right now, which is essentially abandoning your goals for net zero. So it needs to be said. Y- y- you can't wash it any other way. You, you're, you're walking away from the idea that this is possible and I get why you're doing it. I totally understand the budget constraints. But by eliminating uh the position of the facilities and, and uh sustainability uh coordinator and I have no problem with eliminating the ten, ten K that we've given annually to MEAC. That, that's irrelevant. Um, you, you really are, are making a decision that is really far reaching and I need, I need y'all to acknowledge that that's what you're doing. And we need to be honest with each other, that this is no longer a city priority. Um, because I think if you look at the dynamics of that position and you look at what has happened and, and I don't want to get into the, 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 the changing of the light bulbs as being the only thing Chris has done. You all know that's not true. You all have a piece of information in front of you for what Chris has done and the flood totally impacted what Chris was able to do. And you may ultimately come to the conclusion that you need to eliminate that position for budgetary reasons. I get it. But I, I also need you to acknowledge, and I actually think Bill did it because he just crossed out net zero. He just crossed it out. And as, as a city, I want, I want truth, I want honesty. I'm, I'm done.
You're probably not hearing the meet, the beeper, but uh, but it just went. Um,
Okay.
And in terms of the, the statement we received from the uh, from the energy uh committee, uh, what we heard from you is that uh we were uh uh through the efforts of the sustainability coordinator, we received uh one point, one point two million dollar uh grant from the Department of Energy and another twenty three million, twenty three thousand from Efficiency Vermont. Is that uh accurate?
Well, Chris shared with me a document that he said he shared with all of you, which laid out all of what he's done. So those were just two things. But yeah, those, those two things are, are very true.
Okay, thanks. Thanks a lot, Jeff. Let me see. Um, is there anybody else in the room who'd like to be recognized at this point? Steve, you can get up if no one else, I don't see anyone else at this point.
Is that camera on or does it matter?
No, it's not on. No, it's not on. That's one of those.
I didn't see him on the screen.
Um, I want to ask y'all to be careful and look at whether we're not cutting where it's going to hurt the public the most. No effort to cut the core administrative staff, which I submit is bloated. You know, we're, we've got a, a city manager, we got seventy seven people at over a hundred thousand dollars on, on our payroll uh in this bu- projected coming year budget. Uh, I might suggest that everyone over a hundred and twenty five agree to a twenty five percent cut. You know, it's like we're overly, an assistant city manager in a town this small making a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars is insane. It is absolutely insane, especially when you look at the productivity. I mean, basically, Frazier has delegated virtually all of his duties, you know, and some of them to lumber, some of them to, you know, communication, some of them to assistant city manager, but look at the mess that was made of Country Club Road. Look at the mess that's made of the parking ordinance. I know y'all don't want to admit that you made a mess there, but you did. Uh, I just haven't had time to litigate it yet. Um, I don't see a answer. If the parking fund is bringing in less than it's costing for those three people, eliminate the parking. It'll help the businesses. You know, ask the businesses to park as far away as feasible for, for themselves to keep the spaces open for the customers. Uh, the technology outsourcing, I've seen no analysis of that. That's a gross, you know, we're paying for three hundred dollar laptops, enormous fees uh and servers that we could host ourselves for remote access. Um, somebody pointed to what, how little Barry is paying for technology. Uh, I spoke to Clayton today. He's, it's adamant, it's clear to me that Frazier rolled over to Clayton to say, no, we don't want to pay you more than a dollar rent for this property, prime real estate that we planned and told the feds we were going to charge rent for. The, the lobby tourist information center, the state is looking for a tourist information center. That's an ideal location. It could have bathrooms, et cetera, and we have leased it for a dollar and precluded that possibility. Um, regional dispatch, uh, the planning, I took it up with the planning commission just to just get the concept, the efficiency savings and this, this regional governance is, there'll be a bill on regional governance this year. There'll be also the regional dispatch plan uh presented. And the fact that we're fighting against it to protect our little petty monopoly is uh an unaccountable petty monopoly is, is, is bad on you. You know, y'all have ignored this stuff year after year.
That's three minutes. I'll give you a couple of other minute, more minutes because other people have gotten a little bit more.
We should be charging people instead of harassing the homeless for their petty, you know, skirmishes, we should be charging people for the modified mufflers and the parking in the crosswalks. Those are fundamental quality of life things in our special little village. And we don't ticket anybody for parking in the cross, parking in the cross, blocking the crosswalks and, and all the modified. Uh, we should be charging parking spaces for Green Mountain Power that's making money off of those four new parking places where the chargers are. They could pay for their four spaces and instead we paid to put a sign up to say you're supposed to pay the parking meter while you're paying Green Mountain Power for your charging. That's just mismanagement. That's not what I suggested last time. I said, charge Green Mountain Power because they're making revenue. Um, we need to restore some money for the, to, to complete the due diligence on Country Club Road. Country Club Road is a very tight timeframe if we're going to get a new town center or a growth center. Uh, we need a lot of work on the capital budget. We need a site plan and that's not come free and there's no skills within city staff to do that. Uh, I would support a consultant going through public works for both quality and, and Public works for both quality and and we have some. In in many departments, we've got people who are coasting till till retirement, and we need to figure out. A delicate way of handling that. I don't have the expertise and we none of it, nobody on staff has the guts to do it. So you need an outside consultant who knows how to. Turn our public works, our uh, police uh, back into lean, clean machines.
So, thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
I I need to respond to two things. Um. One, um, we have very actively recruited the state for a welcome center in that space of so far. They've not been interested. Um, so. I certainly would welcome that conversation at any time. Uh. And head fact, I just reached out to the BGS Commissioner, wanting to the new one to talk about it again. Just be clear, that is not uh because of inaction on City Spark. And number two, just for those that are watching, Mr. Widerker keeps quoting salary costs. What he's really talking about is the total cost of employment, including health benefits and everything else. There are not seventy-seven people in the city who make a hundred thousand dollars or more in a salary. Uh, in the way most people think about it. Um. In and in the state or anywhere else, if you add, it's a good forty-five percent add, forty, forty-five percent add. So the total cost is that, but our assistant city manager certainly does not make a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for her annual salary with benefits on top of that. That is total all in, and that's the same. Um, the numbers are accurate, but they are. Said in a misleading way, so it doesn't make sure people understand that. Um, I'm not gonna comment on the rest of it.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else in the in the room would like to be recognized at this point? Tina, are you? It it looked it looked like you were moving toward the mic. You don't have to say anything. Okay. You are correct. The council has not decided on a budget yet. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to uh comment on where we are now? And is there anyone else on Zoom? Who would like to ask questions or comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So at this point. I will close the public hearing. And I'll open it to. Members of the council. Paying.
Can we uh talk about a little bit um Meals on Wheels? Is that right? A name?
Sure.
The project because I've been receiving uh emails and I know that city council and city manager also.
Wheels on Wheels?
Yeah.
Sure.
So because uh. We have been um. Yeah.
Amy Pitten, come on down.
Yeah, so if any plans about it, will it affect? Budget proposal if we move it under the Council on Aging? Uh, then maybe it will help us to keep another position. So, thank you.
So before Amy starts, I'll just say that right now. The only city tax funding. That we've got in the budget going to the senior center is for the director's position. So everything else is funded by the operation. So even if the Meals on Wheels went somewhere else, it doesn't. Then the money that comes with it would go somewhere. It doesn't free up any more money for new positions, but I think Amy could talk about the Meals program.
Sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes. Um. So the Meals on Wheels program, which is known as Feast, um, in our um organization. Uh, sends out about sixty meals a day to people in both Montpelier and Berlin. We feed. Um, about eleven people in Berlin on a regular basis. Um. Those meals that total up to um were contracted for somewhere around fifteen thousand meals for the year. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, even though I say sixty meals a day, we um provided meals to a different hundred and ten different people. Um, in the city, um mostly because Meals on Wheels is a really important program. For people who are coming out of the hospital um and only need short-term help for meals. Um, a considerable amount of our meals are for, well, I would say maybe half and half. For people who are continually get them and people who come on and go off and maybe come back on again. Um, when the city brought or. When the Meals on Wheels program came into the senior center, uh, I believe it was back in two thousand fourteen, way before my time. Uh, it was um. The model was a contract uh was made with a catering company to provide the meals, and then the senior center had a um. A a halftime position to um kind of manage how the meals went out and manage the volunteers, that kind of thing. Um, in twenty twenty, I might be right about that. Kelly might have the number exactly. Um, it was decided. That um that was expensive and that it might be. Uh, cheaper or at least net neutral to provide the um meals. To produce and send out the meals in-house. And so at that time, um, an executive chef was hired. A little later, a program manager was hired. Those are the two positions we currently have now. Uh, and um, and it was promoted that those that that would make the the income. And some grant writing and things like that would cover the um program on its own. Uh, then the pandemic happened. Um, the pandemic uh affected the Meals program in a couple of ways. One is that the number of meals being sent out were increased. Uh, because the pandemic led to that. Um, and another thing was that um. The. Management of the program got a little squishy. So um. What happened was that there has been a loss in the Feast program for the last couple of years. Um, and as a result, that was found through the senior center, the senior center um assessment that was done last fall in fall of twenty twenty-three. And uh, it was it was uncovered at that point, and another. Task force was appointed to look at that program. Uh, and see if that idea that Feast could be net neutral was still a possibility. Uh, and that report is just about to come out um in its uh. Final form, and the result of that is that we think it does have that possibility. There's no guarantee. It would require um. Uh, some things that uh just some monitoring that has not happened to this point. Um, it might require. Uh, looking for um some more consistent funding, sponsorships, those kinds of things. But it's not out of the realm of possibility that the the program itself could be net neutral. And so. Uh, the Advisory Council of the Senior Center met yesterday and um heard a preliminary report and um. There seems to be a willingness at the Senior Center to allow the program to go one more year to see if that can be fixed. So and so that it will come in not costing the senior center anything. Um, I would like to note that um. It is generally accepted that towns fund at least a portion of their Meals on Wheels programs. And um, you know, I mentioned that Berlin, uh, we do some meals for Berlin and Berlin in their town appropriation to. Us at the Senior Center pays us to provide those meals to Berlin residents. And um, one of the reasons that I asked for forty-two thousand in the beginning. Was because Montpelier has traditionally not supported its Meals on Wheels programs, and um, I think that's. Something that we need to think about that. That's not uh the kind of town we wanna be, that does not take care of its citizens. So. We're gonna try and manage without that happening, but I think it's important that Montpelier know that that is something that. Almost every other town does somehow. So. Any other questions?
Thanks. Carrie.
Yeah, thanks. I just um wanted to start off responding to something that a member of the public said about the council doesn't have a budget yet. And which is technically true. We have not voted on a budget yet. We're we're talking about proposals and different ideas, but I just wanted to be clear that. The way we get a budget is we vote on it and then it's done, and then there's no opportunity for change. So now would be the time for input if you wanna have any say over what happens with it.
Can I just dive in really quick before you all get too far into discussion?
Oh, thank you. I saw you. I saw you your hand raised, so thanks for jumping in.
That's okay. I just just to inform things, I made a def- I wanna make sure you all know I made a definitive statement at the last meeting that apparently is not correct. Uh, the current budget as presented, since the clerk's office uh is made up of clerk and finance staff. Uh, given the possibility of finance restructuring, I can't guarantee that the clerk's office will be open. Five days a week, uh, eight to four thirty, the way it's been. Um, I will try very hard to keep that happening, or at least to try to minimize. Any reduction in hours, but it is uh, as I've come to understand it, a very definite possibility. So just so you all know.
Thanks, John. Any other questions from members of the council? I I have some questions, and that this doesn't have to be the the end of it, but um. We've certainly. You know, we had uh, we we received from the city manager. Uh, a memorandum uh. On the impact of the staff reductions that uh. Have been um. Incorporated in the in the current recommendation. So I'd like to just. Ask the city manager to uh. To go over that a little bit so that people can understand what what the impacts of these changes are. For instance, the first uh item on the list is. Eliminating one full-time position from the senior center.
Thank you, Mr. Beer. Actually, if if I may, I'd actually prefer that the the folks who are actually gonna be dealing with this uh. Do this uh because I think they can explain it better. We certainly have put it in writing, but I I think it would. Be more helpful to you and to the public to hear directly from the departments that are impacted. So I know Amy, you were just here, but.
Perfect. I almost told you. Don't go away.
You wanna?
Not sure I can pull up what I wrote. Um. Uh, so the position that um has been cut from the senior center. Uh, was in the first iteration of the budget that you received. Um, and so. Uh, that is not one of the ones that's added tonight. Um, that position uh is was called or is called uh the Communications and Development. Uh, Coordinator for the Senior Center. Um, that person also or that position also had uh duties for. Parks and rec as well. Um. So in the development portion, uh, that person was responsible for seeking out grants, writing grant applications um for. Uh, to support both the Senior Center and Feast Meals on Wheels. Uh, they were responsible for uh. Writing the town appropriation requests from the six towns that support um M S A C uh surrounding us. They were responsible for seeking out large gifts, uh, for doing some planning for. Planned giving and encouragement for planned with the senior center. Um. What? Oh, they were and responsible for, we have an annual appeal that happens in the fall for for the senior center. Um, and so. All of that fell in that job description. Um, the second half of the job description was communications. Um. He, that position is responsible for the communications that go out from the senior center. That is our monthly newsletter, our weekly e-newsletter. Um, our uh, let's see, what else is on that list?
They seem to do things like publish the uh, the class schedule.
Oh, the class schedule, yes. Um, the developmental ads for the newspapers, um, the social media, uh, Front Porch Forum, all of the ways that the senior center. Communicates with the public. So um, so in order for that. Communicate the commission, communication to happen, um, it's going to fall back probably mostly on me as we leave. We have two full-time people left at the senior center once this position is vacated. Um, and uh, that's an administrative assistant and myself, and uh. The senior center is quite an extensive organization. We run a hundred and seventy-five classes for seniors every year. We serve um. And those classes are filled by two thousand five hundred people. Um, we run fifteen drop-in groups that are free so that people who are not able to afford the classes have. Access to um socially stimulating things to do at the senior center. We do the a congregant meal every week. Um, and the loss of that position is a a communication. Um, means that we're gonna have to lean on the city's communications person who has just taken on other with the cuts that. This round of cuts. She's gonna be spread across what used to be three job descriptions, and. Where our communications are gonna be severely affected by that, as well our our ability to do any kind of fundraising. So. Um, I only work forty hours a week and uh, I can't take on a whole nother position. So that's the impact from the senior center.
Thanks.
Amy, before you go, I um. Just trying to remember, does Matt, does that position also do outreach for rec and parks?
They did some, yes. They they would do um some advertising, uh, some, oh. Other things that on that 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 person was doing. Um, they did work for rec and parks. They were also on the crisis. Response team. I can't remember what the.
Communications response.
Communications response team. Um, and uh, they also, um. This was only a small piece in their job description, but they are responsible for all the tech that we use at the senior center because. Um, since the pandemic, we have had to do classes, you know, we've had wanted people to still participate in classes, so we developed Zoom and hybrid and all of that kind of stuff. And that position is our tech person, and so our ability to keep those classes going is gonna need, we're gonna need some imagination about how to. Make that happen going forward.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, the next position on the list, which I wanna talk about, and this. Uh, probably involves bringing in both Arnie and Alec. Uh, consolidate the recreation maintenance position with parks and eliminate AmeriCorps and Montpelier Youth Conservation Corps. So if you could just tell us what that involves and uh, and how what the impact will be.
Arnie McMullin, Recreation Department. Um, reduction of the maintenance position, um, bringing us down to just basically one full-time person. Um, it's gonna definitely reduce or eliminate several functions, um, including. Mowing, trimming, and trash pickup at all facilities. So normally, we try to pick those up on a the trash, especially on a more regular basis. Because we've been having wildlife get into the trash too. Um, so that's that's gonna, you know, make that more challenging. Maybe we have to do what the parks do and have a carry-in, carry-out policy. For trash, um, game preparation for Little League mountaineers and softball. Um, a lot of a lot of our fields, being athletic fields, have to be mowed on a more regular basis. It's not typically just once a week. The mountaineers like their grass cut at two inches. Um, which is generally three to four times a week during their season that we have to cut their grass. Um, so that may become a reduction if we're unable to keep up with that. Um, rec center and senior center cleaning will probably be reduced as far as how many days we can do that. Field maintenance practices, um, which involves aerating. We try to aerate our fields because the because of in uh compaction. But more kids and adults that are playing on fields act obviously compact compact the soil, which doesn't allow the grass to grow as well. So we we aerate. Typically fertilizing and also seeding, um, with the amount of use that we. as well. So we aerate typically fertilizing and also seeding with the amount of use that we have on our grass. You know, it's it's ongoing maintenance. And if we don't do that, then you see big spots of dirt out in the fields rather than than grass. Cool cleaning prep and teardown. I mean, a lot of times when we got to get the the pool set up for the season, you know, some of you may have seen us do it. We have to drain the pool. And then we spray the whole thing down. We scrape the loose paint and try to get that all cleaned up and even repaint the pool. You know, so again, that's going to certainly make that more challenging. And then the the last big piece, and I'm sure I'm leaving some stuff out, but the snow removal at the senior center in the rec building, we do, we actually do that now as our staff. Because when we've actually hired it out, it tends to be more costly than if we can do it ourselves with our bucket tractor. And we'll try to do it weekend without having to to bring in a contractor. And other times we have the city, when they're available, also help us, which saves money. But those are some of the challenges. We used to have a crew of two full-time people and four seasonalists that we used to have for doing maintenance on our parks. And now we have more more to do and less people to do it. And that's just the way it's been trending.
Thanks. Alec.
Yeah, thank you. So Alec Ellsworth, the Parks Director, and for just for the benefit of the public, I think you all know this, but our Parks Department and our Rec Department are separate, and there's reasons that I won't go into for why that is, but our Parks Department is kind of like the natural resources wing of the city. We actually take care of the parks and the trees. A lot of people think of parks as Hubbard Park. Hubbard Park is just one of our parks. We take care of over five hundred acres of park. Hubbard Park is about two hundred and fifty acres, so it's less than half in addition to six parks around town. And then our crew also does all the tree work for the city so that fifty-two miles of roads and sidewalks, we do all the removals, pruning, planting, and general maintenance for that. So we're four people. I think we've always had a portfolio of work that is vastly beyond kind of what the job that we'd like to do. So we do the best we can, and we have developed, you know, programs over the years to try to do things better. In my comments to you, like I mentioned, we we try to catalog our sort of targets of maintenance that we have. So we have about a nine thousand hour maintenance backlog for our parks. So it's just maintenance. It's not projects or programs. And our goal is to to bring that down. And then for our tree work, we currently have about a little thirteen hundred hour backlog of tree works. Our our goal for that was to bring that down to three hundred. I think the best way to think about how the cuts are going to affect our department is kind of think about like a hierarchy of needs for what we do. I think at the bottom of the pyramid would be the basic maintenance work, you know, that is in for our parks and our and our tree 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 care. I think at its core, we want clean parks, we want safe parks. I think that's what we want to provide. That's what people that's what people in Montpelier want. I think that's what they deserve. So at its core, I think that's what we need to do, and I don't want to affect that at all. At, you know, if you if you go, well, just about, you know, the tree maintenance program, our our goal with that is to provide a acceptable level of risk. There's never a no-risk aspect of having trees in your city. There's always some risk. So our our goal is to provide an acceptable level of risk. So those are two goals that I think we can't compromise on having clean, safe parks and an acceptable level of risk with regard to our trees.
Alec, one question about the tree program.
Yeah.
Do we still have adequate ability to to continue with the Emerald Ash Borer Program?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not proposing to that the that the cuts will impact that. And I think a lot of it has to do with, I don't think that's a problem that we can ignore. So we we have this portfolio of work in our job, I think, you know, not just for our department, but probably for all departments. In the municipal world, it's not, it's a it's a question of prioritizing because there's always people, people will always take more. You know, I think councillor Haney said at some point, you know, there's unlimited demand for free services. And and I absolutely agree, you know, if you there, there's never a limit to what people will want. You have to put a limit and making those boundaries is the hardest part of the job. So yeah, going back to sort of what we do, maintenance on top of the maintenance would be our project. So you know, the Parks Commission is kind of in charge of this aspect of our work. These are big major improvements to our park. They have a long history going back, you know, one hundred and twenty-five years now of making steady improvements. When that park, when Hubbard Park was, you know, given to the city, it was just a piece of land and they hired, you know, people to make plans and build roads and build the tower and many things over, you know, over time. Just in my ten years here, we've done quite a lot of these projects. So those are things that have a lot of community buy-in. And, you know, they take some of our work that's contractor work. We do some stuff in-house. And then on on the very top of that, above our projects would be our programs. So our our two big programs are the Montpelier Youth Conservation Corps and the Feast Farm, which grows food for the Meals on Wheels program. So those are both, the Feast Farm is totally grant-funded. And MYCC is mostly grant-funded. It costs us about hundred thousand dollars to do per year, and the city put in about thirty-five thousand dollars. So basically a third of that. So what is proposed here is to to eliminate funding for MYCC and also eliminate funding for our two AmeriCorps members who provide full-time work for eleven months of the year. And so what the impact of that will be, you know, thinking back to that pyramid of maintenance, projects, programs, we're basically going to eat into it from the top down. So we we can't run those programs without the, you know, our AmeriCorps members really make it possible to run MYCC. So we we wouldn't run that program. The Feast Farm, you know, we will I wish I could stand up here and say that, you know, we're going to keep things going and we're going to do the best we can. You know, I want to like sort of use hedge hedge my language a little bit because, you know, it's a little uncertain what the impacts are going to be, but you know, pause or eliminate that program. You know, I'd like to say we can continue doing projects at a slower rate, but again, it's a lot of it is uncertain. And you know, like last year, we cut, we we cut the MYCC funding, we cut the AmeriCorps funding. Okay, that's fine. We're able to sort of pull a rabbit out of a hat for this year. Last summer, we were able to do those things. We found funding for our AmeriCorps members for another year. So this year, we're also removing those things. We're also now we're cutting a rec position and adding those duties to our staff. We're also cutting the Matt's position. So, you know, taking communications and development and putting that on the on mostly my role. So if it was just one thing or two things, you know, I I think we could say like, okay, well, we're going to we're going to try, or we're going to pause, or we're going to try to keep these programs going. But at some point, we just don't have enough time to do, you know, more than the basic maintenance and it's a little bit you know, penny wise and pound foolish, I guess, comes to mind in the sense of like you, you cut twenty thousand dollars for two. You know, there are two, like each AmeriCorps member is ten thousand dollars. So you cut two of those positions. Well, that's like two full-time positions for our department. And and it's not it's not just that they do work. They also allow me, you know, my colleagues to do other work because they're doing kind of like the more basic maintenance or little projects, and they allow me to do fundraising to run these programs. You know, any any program or project requires a lot of different skills, you know, we kind of have like chief cook and and bottle washer all in the same role in our department. So without, you know, you're taking away some of this basic like basic low-level labor. It it affects everyone in the department. And and I think at some point, you just can't do it all. So I think I wrote out pretty much, you know, what the impacts are in in my statement. And sorry for being so long-winded. But, you know, I think we're we're facing quite drastic changes to our department. And I think if you have become accustomed to seeing a certain thing out of, you know, what we do in the last five years, it's going to be different. And that's just something people have to get used to and accept.
Thanks, Alec. Sarah, why don't you come on up? All right, now you're looking at some pretty drastic changes in your department.
Yeah, so Sarah LaCroix, the Finance Director. We are reducing the delinquent tax collector position in finance. We are reducing the treasurer position within finance, and then finance will be picking up the assessor assistant duties. We currently have a significant workload, as Bill mentioned, the amount of dollars that flow through the city each year. Our staff does a fantastic job, but we are already stretched quite thin. I understand the budget constraints. And so, you know, my background, I'm a certified public accountant. I did eight years auditing municipalities. So I've seen how a lot of finance departments work. And ours has a lot of great things about it already. But given that these challenges and these reductions in positions, I'm looking at restructuring our entire department to be able to accommodate these duties and to be sure that we keep a good segregation of duties and good internal controls so that we still come back with clean audits and our city finances aren't exposed. I don't think that it will be easy. In the last month and a half, I've had two different staff members go out with different conditions or issues. And so my senior accountant and I have been covering payroll and other different things. So it just leaves our capacity stretched a little bit as we try to keep operations afloat on the day-to-day. We will need to appoint a treasurer. You all will need to appoint a treasurer because we need to have one. I would be recommending a current staff member for that. It would be a role on top of their other duties that we would just have to be sure didn't overlap in a way that left us exposed. We will also be training another staff member to take on delinquent tax collecting, which is not an easy job to do. And then the assessor's assistant position, I will be honest, is a little foreign to me. I know what goes into it and how important it is. And so we will be working very closely with the assessor's office to incorporate that into one of my department members who has a skill set that would be advantageous for that position. That being said, as John mentioned, in order to accommodate these things, I will need to pull finance staff out of the clerk's office at least a couple of days a week. That way they can have uninterrupted time to focus on these high-important tasks that still need to be completed. Right now, we have walk-ins nonstop all day. People are accustomed to a face-to-face interaction with a finance staff member. People here, more than a lot of places I've seen, like to come in and pay their taxes in person, not just send them the check. And there's something to be said for that face-to-face interaction and stamping those bills and having that relationship with the community. Some of which we just won't be as accessible because we have to get these jobs done. So I expect finance will look a lot different when I sit here next year during budget season. And I can't promise it won't be without its challenges. And I expect there will be many more challenges that I I'm not aware of right now as we continue to work through this. But as always, our priority is to provide the best financial and fiscal responsibility for the city.
And are there, are there service reductions that that you can anticipate, like slower processing of certain payments or bills or anything like that? Or is it too soon to tell that?
I mean, I expect, given the reduction in staff and the shifting of duties, that things may take longer. That's just the reality. There aren't as many of us to do the job and it is still a heavy workload. I myself am managing our FEMA recovery. I manage our tech contract. I've got the budget and all things finance. And so you know, I'm doing two positions right now as it sits. And so I just expect that there will be reductions in service, especially in our accessibility to the public.
Thanks. Eliminate the sustainability facilities and facilities coordinator position is.
Chris. That's Chris. When we drafted this, DPW didn't get a chance to weigh in. Kurt, I know you'd also had some thoughts on this if you want to weigh in as well, just the impact on DPW for this. Get a chance to get this. So Chris, go ahead and do your part, but then if Kurt wants to weigh in as well.
Okay. Chris Lumbrough, Sustainability and Facilities Coordinator. My position covers a lot of breadth. I do a lot of different things that are at the fringes of both sustainability and facilities. I I played a key role in flood recovery in twenty-three, mucking out the basements of City Hall, coordinating that work. Fire station, same thing. Drying on dehumidifiers, all that stuff. Rebuilding the city generator, the generator that serves City Hall and Fire Department. Coordinating a rental generator to take the place of that for the whole time it was being rebuilt. Coordinating electrical, mechanical plumbing repairs to City Hall. We stayed, we had the whole mold issue that that happened up at the Country Club Road, took a bunch of time for me as well. That's a lot of what I've done there, but more recently, issuing RFPs to get the finance wing and and fire department put back together. Selecting contractors, supervising that work. All of that work was done around Sarah's department, around active workspaces with very little, very little interruption. Coordination work to help Mike with his temporary offices, both of them. And we 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 moved people from temporary offices multiple times from the senior center to the police department to now to the Leonine Building where Mike is. All of that stuff took a bunch of coordination as well. Other things, kind of immediate aftermath of the flood. We had a failure propane tank up in our water treatment plant that, you know, with with heating season coming down upon us, we had to kind of scramble. I helped Kurt a lot to get if the above-ground tanks placed there to be able to heat that building and run the generators through the winter. What else? Broken broken sprinkler pipes at the DPW garage that and and of course, during this time period, this is stuff that probably Kurt or Zach could have done. But they were, they were rebuilding pump stations. They were, you know, all the all the public infrastructure that got hammered by the flood was was on top of them as well. So where does where does that bandwidth, where does that capacity come from in those situations?
Hey, can you talk about what the sustainability part side of your job is?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like a little more time on.
Okay, go ahead.
There's you know, there's been there hasn't been proper attention paid to cities' facilities for a long time. It's been kind of an add-on job to different people, you know. Each department head takes care of their own building. I think Bill Bill recommended that this position be a split position for that reason. We have roofs that are in terrible shape at the fire station, at the rec center. Police department had roof leaks. Worked with contractors to get them there to patch those roofs up and make plans for permanent repairs. Air conditioning units failing at both of those buildings. Country Club Road, last winter, we had door issues. We had, you know, heat issues up there. A lot of this stuff is happening outside of regular work hours, right? I'm taking care of this evenings, weekends, nights, middle of the winter, whenever whenever it happens. Helping Arnie with failed boilers at the at the rec center that to keep keep requiring multi-thousand-dollar Band-Aids to keep these things going. So that's that's some of the facility stuff, still not all of it, right? Doing stuff at Transit Center to keep that building in decent shape. It goes on and on. Sustainability. I have a kind of a standing partnership with Efficiency Ramon. Almost almost weekly basis, we meet. And that led to the DOE grant that would not have come to the attention of the city any other way. And that's that's one point two million dollar benefit from DOE with a three hundred thousand dollar match from the city to replace the heating system at the rec center. We're going to have air-to-water heat pumps with thermal storage, new electrical system, a conservative estimate of the repair work that would be needed just to keep that building functioning as is is probably six hundred thousand dollars just to put fossil fuel system back in that building and keep it heated. fossil fuel system back in that building and keep it heated. The LED light bulb replacement project, right? It's, it doesn't seem like a big thing, it's uh, but it, in the, in seventeen-year life of those bulbs, it's gonna save the city a quarter million dollars in energy. The bulbs were granted from, from Efficiency Vermont, didn't cost us anything, we're, we're paying the installation with our revolving loan fund from, from MEAC. Again, that, that wouldn't have happened other than in replacing bulbs that were out and you know, everybody whose facilities I've been in and will tell you that they, they've been living with bulbs out for months or, or longer. And it's, so we're, we're taking care of a need and saving energy at the same time. I'm, I'm sure I'm not capturing everything here, but there, there's a lot that I do. And I, I kind of alluded to this, but so much of, of this work that I do is, it's necessary stuff and it's gonna be transferred to Kurt, it's gonna be transferred to her, to Arnie, to her. Amy, everybody's, everybody's gonna have to work harder without me stepping in to do these things.
And that one point two million dollars from the Department of Energy, is that more or less than what we pay you?
That is, uh, it's a little more than you pay me, including my benefits, so, yeah. Yeah, I think all, all in, I'm a hundred and forty, it's, it's where I am, so I, you know, back of the napkin. The, the revenue and savings that I've brought to the city in the two years I've been in this position are roughly ten times my salary and benefits.
Thanks, Kurt.
Yeah, I wanted to, I'm Kurt Monica, Public Works Director, um, wanna put a little more emphasis on the district heat rebuild. So after the flood, we, we lost all of our metering systems, um, our fiber optic communication, our remote SCADA access to view the equipment and what the pumps are doing, uh, we lost everything. So, um, we had multiple contractors, we had an electrician that had to come in, um. We had a fiber optic contractor, we had a controls contractor, we had a meter contractor that had to configure all the meters. And um, I just didn't have time to provide access and coordinate all that work. And Chris was really instrumental in um, coordinating that and getting all of that done. And I don't, I don't think we would have been ready for the seeding season if you hadn't been here, because like you said, um, Public Works had massive amounts of infrastructure that we had to rebuild as part of the flood recovery. Um, so I just want to put a little emphasis on that and then uh, elaborate on the facilities, so um, you know, Public Works is made up of water.
Glad you guys have that table, because I would be doing that if we were up here.
So a water treatment, for example, has, I think, five or six buildings, we've got the, the plant itself, the grid, we've got multiple vacuum stations. The wastewater plant has seven buildings, we have the Public Works Garage. Um, so just uh, in Public Works, a number of facilities, and again, some of the roofs, I didn't mention, the water plant has a leaking roof. The wastewater plant has a leaking roof, uh, those projects, I'm, I'm a civil engineer, so my expertise is really in municipal infrastructure. I don't have a strong H spec background or building. Um, so we really do rely on Chris to um, support the facilities aspect of, of the buildings, and there's a lot of them. Um, never mind, you know, City Hall, Rec and Senior Center, all the other police station. Um, there's, there's a lot of buildings, and this year is the first year, um, in a very long time that we've developed a CIP plan that incorporates facilities funding. And um, you know, I do have concerns about how that's, who's gonna pick up all that work and um, and I don't know that there's someone on city staff that has the technical expertise that Chris brings um, to do that work. Contract, manage the contracts to make sure all that is done correctly. But those are just kind of my head, there's a lot of other things of the sustainability, um, just the, the building, the grant at the rec. Of that one point one million dollar, I'm not sure who's gonna manage that, I'm guessing it's probably gonna come to Public Works, but makes me a little bit nervous. And then the twenty-six thousand dollar uh, other grant through Efficiency Vermont, Chris really pulled that together. Um, so from meeting up with uh, Efficiency Vermont, that funding was for uh, a heat loop analysis to provide dual heating between uh, the wastewater plant and the Public Works Garage through the new pellet boiler. Um, so we were able to fund um, fifty percent or so of the design work, the preliminary design work. To do that, which is a really, you know, innovative um, way to heat the, the system, you know, getting away from fossil fuels. Uh, so another important project.
Thanks, Kurt, thanks, Chris. Next, we're to consolidating Executive Assistant Communications Coordinator, Human Resources.
So Evelyn and I are gonna get into the details, but um, what we're gonna be talking about is just really a restructuring of the city manager's office. Um, and it um, is really three positions that we will be restructuring. And so um, just on the face of it, it's Human Resources, it's the Executive Assistant to the City Managers and um, the Communications Coordinator. Um, and so in consolidating that work, you know, we're right now, um, in light of the Executive Assistant leaving. Evelyn and I are trying to triage as much as possible to pick up those core functions, and so I'm gonna read you a little list, just because it is some, some pretty heavy-duty stuff that's essential to making sure that um, things happen. And some of them do have legal requirements associated with them. Um, so just starting there, but um, starting with Human Resources. Um, Bill mentioned in his presentation that it would really be a fifty-fifty split between Human Resources and the Admin Assistant work. And so we'll be kind of retooling that as we go along. Um, but some of the HR work that's happening right now likely will either be stalled, delayed, or assigned to somebody else. Um, and so the most immediate Human Resources needs will be covered, but everything else that can kind of be uh, planned will be otherwise assigned. Um, and then um, looking at the um, Communications Coordinator, you know, some of the things like the city's website. Um, posting local events and handling social media as well as price releases will be kind of split out. And that work will be a little bit tricky, just because the workload has expanded as well. So um, Evelyn will also be taking on duties associated with community services. I mean, the positive is that it's a little more centralized, the negative is that it is just more. Um, and so other things associated with the um, crisis communication um, position um, will also be changed. Um, so the CCRT hopefully will still continue. Um, but uh, we will really need to take a look at, you know, what that looks like and how um, those folks respond as it is to these positions, we're on that team, and so we've actively recruited within the existing um, staff to fill those positions. The Crisis Communication Team has been really instrumental in making sure that we can respond. Monitoring situations as they arise and getting information out, which is just really paramount right now, um, with all of the things that we've been dealing with. Proactive communications, Evelyn is amazing at making sure that she gets the word out and um, really has made I think, dramatic improvements to our website and making sure that that information is, you know, current and up to date. Um, that's not saying that we don't still have work to do, because we do for sure. Um, but you know, I think that that's something that, you know, we're gonna have to deal with. Um, ADA compliance is another one, um, and so now we're starting to get into some of the really significant pieces. Um, and then committee support, so we have a lot of committees, um, as it stands right now, both Evelyn and I are gonna kind of split duties. Um, and then once we sort of fold HR into the mix, um, we'll be kind of assigning some of those things as well. But I'll be taking on some of the council duties, or council, just to be a little more direct, and then um, Evelyn will be taking on the committee work. Um, but there's just a lot that goes into tracking those committees and making sure agendas are posted and the like. I'm gonna pause because I'm a fast talker. Um, okay, and so then just to get into some of the executive assistant functions that I think I just wanna really highlight, Evelyn and I have been working with Mary to kind of download where she goes, what is needed. Um, so the doors may seem like a little thing, but it's not, um, because, you know, making sure that City Hall is secure. Um, and you know, getting that system underway, public records requests, uh, we mentioned the committee work. Um, committee applications and street closure permits are something that um, will be taken on. Um, the weekly memo, accounts payable, um, review of parklets, room reservations. Um, the welcome legislators reception, um, we'll be doing for union contracts coming up. And so any of the administrative support surrounded with those contracts will, you know, fall onto the staff doing those negotiations. Um, the council handbook, I, I think that's important just to make sure that everybody has access to the same information at the same time. And really, I mean, it is our source document for all of our policies, it's really critical. Um, and then orientation of new council members, um, and then, you know, there's some other employee-related items here as well. Um, and so I'm gonna maybe let Evelyn kind of, you know, share some of her takes on these shifts. Um, but that's kind of an overview of what this would mean.
Sure, thanks, Kelly, um, so Evelyn Prem, Communications Coordinator for the city. Um, I'd like to just preface this by saying, first, Kelly did, I think, a fantastic job of um, providing a really high-level overview of these specific impacts. I'd like to speak a little bit um, on to my workload specifically, um, and I also first wanted to just preface this by saying that I've dedicated my life to working in public service, and it is an honor and a privilege to serve you and to support the work of Bill and Kelly and all our department leaders, um, and most importantly, the residents of Montpelier. Um, and so with that said, I think that everyone who has spoken before us has done a great job of um, kind of alluding to the somber atmosphere that's um, washing over our staff as we're staring down the barrel of this proposed budget. Um, and the demands are significant on the staff. And so for this position specifically, um, as, as mentioned earlier, I will be um, attempting to span as we restructure um, three positions. And so just a little bit on um, the impacts on my, on our services, Kelly mentioned too. Um, I have established the Crisis Communications Response Team shortly after I was hired full-time. Um, and uh, so that, yeah, that group was instrumental in our ability to successfully respond to and manage the two thousand twenty-three flood crisis. Um, and the current proposed budget eliminates two of our key members of that team. Both were highly skilled in website administration and sending VT alerts, so that is gonna be some tremendous shoes to fill. Um, as we uh, take time to train um, new staff members who hopefully um, are, are existing staff members into that team. Um, and should my position um, not make it through into the next budget, that team would likely dissolve. Um, basically, because before me, the reason that it didn't exist is because the existing people just didn't have time to do it. So I have been um, happy to assist our um, emergency management team and really provide a higher level of service to our community members. Um, so these, yeah, so these losses will also result in um, three of the six staff that we had trained in sending VT alerts. So should, and just also to, to clarify a little bit what that means, uh, for people who might not be familiar with the backend of how VT alerts work. So should an emergency occur when, um, for instance, if all three of the staff members right uh, now are not available, a BT alert would not go out, um, and that is specifically because the responsibility is on behalf of municipalities to designate who those emergency responders, those communications emergency responders are. Um, and so uh, I and my team receive training through Vermont Emergency Management in order to do that. Um, it's not just something that automatically happens um, from the state, that's a, that's something that each municipality has to decide for themselves who is going to be those, those people and how that, how they are trained and how they um, the process for that, for going out. As Kelly also mentioned, proactive communication, this has been a huge part of my um, workload as I uh, started here, that was the number one desire and uh, expressed need from both staff and residents alike. Uh, is a need for more proactive communication. Um, and the original aim for sort of my role was kind of to be able to stay above the fray, because people are so busy to be able to put that sort of umbrella consistency over the city's communication and make sure that we're putting out um, information that's not, not only uh, timely but accurate. And so that all takes time and uh, expertise. I'm a member of the National Association of Government Communicators, they're the only organization in the nation that is dedicated to public service communication specifically. Um, and so with that membership comes professional development, and I uh, take every opportunity I can to squeeze in uh, webinars and conferences to, to make sure that I'm staying um, up to date on the changing federal regulations. As Kelly mentioned, um, our ADA compliance for uh, website and written communications are different because we are a public municipality, and so we have to follow federal guidelines. Those are changing in twenty-twenty-seven, and so I've been working with our staff to make sure that we are ahead of the curve to be able to meet those higher standards. And uh, again, that all takes, that all takes staff time to be able to do that, that's not something that can be automated. Um, it is a, uh, you know, accessibility is a um, uh, people-heavy in uh, endeavor, and so that, that will definitely be impacted as my workload increases. Um, and then uh, as Kelly also mentioned, committee support, so when um, either the city manager, assistant city manager and um, other staff uh, liaisons to committees are unavailable to serve, I, I pinch-hit and I sit in for them. Um, and so my uh, ability to be able to do that would also be compromised just as my schedule changes. Um, and yeah, as Kelly mentioned, the administrative services that um, I will be absorbing are, are definitely extensive and um, outlined in that memo, and so I'll, I'll pause there and um, take any questions.
Thanks, Evelyn. All right, Chief Nordensen.
Hello, Eric Nordensen from the Police Department. Uh, I didn't get to weigh in a little bit on Chris and how much he means to my department and mostly to me. But I, but he does, um, there's a reason we're all here, right? Because our facility is completely destroyed, who's gonna rebuild that with Chris being gone? I wanna think about that, uh, there's nobody on staff that can do it, so. City Hall is destroyed, we still need to rebuild it, and we have nobody to manage that, so please keep that in mind. The Fire Department and I share an admin, she does mostly ambulance billing, which makes it, I do the admin. If I lose Chris, I'm now doing the building, you guys hired me to be a police chief, I do public records constantly. I do admin, and then before Chris, I was on the roof, sealing the roof. I was resetting air conditioners, things that I shouldn't be doing. I said my piece on Chris. Uh, for, for us, it's real easy decisions for me. When the decision was made that Chris was gonna leave, Net Zero became nonexistent, right? So um, I still believe in some of the Net Zero principles. I could save forty thousand dollars and get two hybrids, so uh, that was an easy, easy choice for me. I'm getting some emails from the public about, can we raise money, can we do this? I don't want the forty thousand dollars if I can't have my cop back, I need people. The seventeenth cop gave us hope, even if I couldn't fill it, it gave us a chance and some hope. There's probably a good twenty-five of us, twenty-five percent of us that are probably out of here in twenty-six, twenty-seven. We need to ramp up, or you're gonna be in the same boat that we were in two years ago with eleven. I've heard nothing about, I've heard nothing but we need to do studies, I have studies. The FBI puts out how many cops we should have for a town our size, it's twenty, nineteen point two, I have sixteen, right? There's studies that are currently being done to tell us how many dispatchers we should have, we should have eleven, I have eight, I have one out, I have seven. All the while, I'm trying to fill the shifts, and the overtime is being criticized. I, I'm literally running shifts short. When we take those into consideration, then I have external factors like parade permits. And I have to do the parade permits, right? So we started to limit some of our parade permits to lighten our load for staff and also the budget. So for instance, I have a sidewalk-only parade for the kids at Union School, we suggested it would be basically sidewalk only, so I could save five officers. So just, just for, you know, my own desire to figure it out, we pumped in the numbers of how much it costs for that event. And it was twenty-three hundred dollars to cover us and our equipment. And I looked at the schedule that's already online at State House, and there's eleven events posted, nine of which are gonna require street closures, so you start pumping those numbers out, there's money that I don't even control that comes out of my budget. So then I have to prioritize what's more important, and I can tell you what's more important, my staff is the most important. And if the people that work for us aren't the most important, our priorities are all skewed. The people are most important, and I'm sending them out with two cops on duty, or sometimes even one cop on duty. And I'm getting emails from legislators asking why it's a sidewalk-only permit. Right, well, I can't afford it, and if I'm saying that I have to make my guys and girls do a parade and that's more important than covering the shift, I'm the wrong guy, cuz I'm not gonna do it. So the numbers, I arbitrarily was told to cut 25 grand out of overtime. I gave you a number I needed. I cut 25 grand from it. I'm going to be over budget. I already know. The impact, if you want to give me 40 grand back for that hybrid, please give it to me for my comps. That's what I need. So that's my piece. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, it is, we're just past, it's time for our 10 minute break. When we come back, we can have council debate on where we go from here. and Sarah, I think I'll ask you to come up and put the worksheet on the screen or or Bill, you can do that. Someone can do that. Okay. And while you're getting set up, I'll just say that I started out our discussion last week by saying to members of the council, we're the deciders and it's time to make the decisions. We've heard about the impacts of the of the cuts that that you have asked for. And so it's now time to discuss them to see if that's where we want to be or if we want to be somewhere else. I think I should point out for members of the public who may not be we haven't really talked about bonding and make people, it may not be as visible to to the members of the public. But just in the last few months, we have we have cut or turned down approximately $12 million in in potentially bonding that we were potentially expecting to, which the $10 million for the Water Resource Recovery Facility, which we canceled last week. The 1.2 million dollars for Isabel Circle, which we said no to last week and Confluence Park appropriation, which we which we canceled a few months ago. So I think it's important for people to recognize that your council is paying attention to all our potential expenditures and 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 the value that they would provide to the to to the city and being is that, because all those are are bonds, but they also will amount, will would translate into future payments on on debt service and into many years into the future. So we have any general thoughts that people have on on where we stand with the budget? Okay, I'm not hearing, go ahead Lauren. It looked like you were raising, am I right?
Share some initial thoughts. I mean, first of all, I just want to thank the staff. This is obviously a brutal budget and everyone I know is working so hard looking for every angle on how we can cut costs. And I know we've got a city staff who work really hard and do essential work for our community and are really skilled and dedicated and I'm just grateful to all of you for your hard work and all you've been doing. I mean, on this budget proposal before us, especially the latest proposed cuts. I mean, to me, I'd rather us eliminate a program, put a project on hold than do this like death by a thousand cuts approach. Or like purposely by not making any hard decision around some program or something. It means that we're just going to make every single department overstretched, unable to do the services, but still ask them to do all the same services and all the same programs and projects essentially. I mean, I think we all have talked about a need for a broader look at systems change. And the approach we're taking, we're just going to put more work on fewer staffs plate. It's going to give them less time to think creatively. How could we change the systems? How could we get more innovative? How could we do this in a more efficient way? It's going to lead to less efficiency, less good work. So I think it's just setting us up for failure. Like you can already hear the complaints we're going to be getting from the community about what this budget is going to mean. Sure, it's great. We've got a, you know, 3% tax rate, but it's I don't think people are going to be happy with the results that it's delivering for people. I appreciated Jeff Fitzgerald and the MEAC input. I mean, to abandon our Net Zero commitment. You know, we we were just flooded, a climate disaster. LA is burning. Like knowing, even if you don't care about climate change, energy efficiency saves taxpayers money. So us just saying we're not going to pursue this anymore is short sighted. I mean, it it sickens me. It embarrasses me that the capital of Vermont is abandoning a Net Zero commitment. And it's short sighted because it's going to cost us more money. I mean, I, I think like even considering cutting the facilities and sustainability position, a position that's paying for itself, there's literally money sitting there that we're going to leave on the table that are efficiency projects that are going to cost taxpayers more. So we are making a very short sighted decision to cut a position that not only can it be improving energy efficiency, bring in money to pay for itself many times over, but it's also helping manage the rebuild of our flood and all this stuff. I think that's just unconscionable. You know, I know we need to be looking seriously at the tax burden. I just think that this particular budget, like this latest slate of cuts in particular, is going to make it harder to do that. We need to grow the grant list. We need to look at projects that are bringing people to town to bring in tax dollars. This is doing nothing to address those core things that are going to get us out of this structural challenge. They're going to make it harder to do that. So I think it's just short sighted. I think it's going to cost us more money in the long term. So, I mean, I would at least stick with where we started coming into tonight. And I will be, you know, in particular disappointed if we move forward with a facilities and sustainability coordinator position cut. But I mean, I'm personally going to be opposing any of the further cuts.
Thanks Lauren.
I was thinking Lauren, so if you take the different approach, what program would you eliminate? Did not have to do these.
I don't want to, but I would rather if other counselors want to cut a certain amount from the budget, that it focus it instead of saying just to spread it everywhere. So every department is not able to do its job, which is what I feel like we're doing with this.
Yeah. It's true. And so we said in the beginning, we were trying to avoid and we didn't do anything about that.
Yeah.
Well, we, we asked, we asked the staff really for their recommendations. And and this is, this is their recommendation is to spread it the way they've spread it. They had, they didn't suggest the cut of a, of a program.
But but the way the conversation has gone is we are not telling them to cut a program. If we said city council wants to cut, you know, pick a department, a program, a project we want to put on hold, then that's, that's a council policy decision that we need to direct them to do. Otherwise, it's inevitable that we'll get a proposal like this that spreads it out, that allows them to still do everything just less well with fewer people. So so this is what we asked for by not giving direction to do something different, I think.
I I don't know. I I guess I disagree. Maybe it was, you can interpret it that way. But but for, for example, in the last week, we just, we just targeted a number. We just said we want to reduce by X amount. We didn't say how, where and what, in what manner. And so it could have been done in, I mean, a number of proposals could have been, maybe we could do this or that. It's not what happened. What happened was spreading the, spreading the pain. And and yes, there'll be reductions in services and I, I'm not happy about it, but I hear every day from people who are not happy about big increases in taxes and and it looks like the school tax in fact will be going up, not down. It would be over 3% increase probably. That's the prediction. So that puts, puts us over 10% if we stay at where we are now on top of last year, on top of the year before that. It's just not sustainable. I don't think it is. And I, you know, I understand this pain.
Ready to go and and Sarah, I think I'll ask you to come up and put the worksheet on the screen or Bill, you can do that. Someone can do that. Okay. And while you're getting set up, I'll just say that I started out our discussion last week by saying to members of the council, we're the deciders and it's time to make the decisions. We've heard about the impacts of the of the cuts that that you have asked for and so it's now time to discuss them to see if that's where we want to be or if we want to be somewhere else. I think I should point out for members of the public who may not be, we haven't really talked about bonding and make people, it may not be as visible to to the members of the public, but just in the last few months, we have we have cut or turned down approximately $12 million in in potentially bonding that we were potentially expecting to which the $10 million for the Water Resource Recovery Facility, which we canceled last week, the 1.2 million dollars for Isabel Circle, which we said no to last week and the Confluence Park appropriation, which we which we canceled a few months ago. So I think it's important for people to recognize that your council is paying attention to all our potential expenditures and 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 the value that they would provide to the to to the city and being is that because all those are are bonds, but they also will amount will would translate into future payments on on debt service and into many years into the future. So we have any general thoughts that people have on on where we stand with the budget? Okay, I'm not hearing. Go ahead, Lauren. It looked like you were raising, am I right?
Share some initial thoughts. I mean, first of all, I just want to thank the staff. This is obviously a brutal budget and everyone I know is working so hard, looking for every angle on how we can cut costs. And I know we've got a city staff who work really hard and do essential work for our community and are really skilled and dedicated. And I'm just grateful to all of you for your hard work and all you've been doing. I mean, on this budget proposal before us, especially the latest proposed cuts, I mean, to me, I'd rather us eliminate a program, put a project on hold than do this like death by a thousand cuts approach or like purposely by not making any hard decision around some program or something. It means that we're just going to make every single department overstretched, unable to do the services, but still ask them to do all the same services and all the same programs and projects essentially. I mean, I think we all have talked about a need for a broader look at systems change and the approach we're taking. We're just going to put more work on fewer staff's plate. It's going to give them less time to think creatively. How could we change the systems? How could we get more innovative? How could we do this in a more efficient way? It's going to lead to less efficiency, less good work. So I think it's just setting us up for failure. Like you can already hear the complaints we're going to be getting from the community about what this budget is going to mean. Sure, it's great. We've got a, you know, 3% tax rate, but it's I don't think people are going to be happy with the results that it's delivering for people. I appreciated Jeff Fitzgerald and the MEAC input. I mean, to abandon our net zero commitment, you know, we we were just flooded, a climate disaster. LA is burning. Like knowing, even if you don't care about climate change, energy efficiency saves taxpayers money. So us just saying we're not going to pursue this anymore is short sighted. I mean, it it sickens me. It embarrasses me that the capital of Vermont is abandoning and that's your commitment. And it's short sighted because it's going to cost us more money. I mean, I I think like even considering cutting the facilities and sustainability position, a position that's paying for itself. There's literally money sitting there that we're going to leave on the table that are efficiency projects that are going to cost taxpayers more. So we are making a very short sighted decision to cut a position that not only can it be improving energy efficiency, bring in money to pay for itself many times over, but it's also helping manage the rebuild of our flood and all this stuff. I think that's just unconscionable. You know, I know we need to be looking seriously at the tax burden. I just think that this particular budget, like this latest slate of cuts in particular is going to make it harder to do that. We need to grow the grand list. We need to look at projects that are bringing people to town to bring in tax dollars. This is doing nothing to address those core things that are going to get us out of this structural challenge. They're going to make it harder to do that. So I think it's just short sighted. I think it's going to cost us more money in the long term. So I mean, I would at least stick with where we started coming into tonight and I will be, you know, in particular disappointed if we move forward with a facilities and sustainability coordinator position cut, but I mean, I'm personally going to be opposing any of the further cuts.
Thanks, Lauren.
I was thinking, Lawrence, if you take the different approach, what program would you eliminate? Do not have to do these.
I don't want to, but I would rather if other counselors want to cut a certain amount from the budget that it focus it instead of saying just spread it everywhere. So every department is not able to do its job, which is what I feel like we're doing with this.
Yeah. It's true. And so we said in the beginning, we were trying to avoid and we didn't do anything about that.
Yeah.
Well, we we asked, we asked the staff really for their recommendations. And and this is, this is their recommendation is to spread it the way they've spread it. They had, they didn't suggest the cut of a of a program.
But but the way the conversation has gone is we are not telling them to cut a program. If we said city council wants to cut, you know, pick a department, a program, a project, we want to put on hold. Then that's, that's a council policy decision that we need to direct them to do. Otherwise, it's inevitable that we'll get a proposal like this that spreads it out, that allows them to still do everything, just less well with fewer people. So so this is what we asked for by not giving direction to do something different, I think.
I I don't know. I guess I disagree. Maybe it was, you can interpret it that way, but but for, for example, in the last week, we just, we just targeted a number. We just said, we want to reduce by X amount. We didn't say how, where and what, in what manner. And so it could have been done in, I mean, a number of proposals could have been made. We could do this or that. It's not what happened. What happened was spreading the, spreading the pain. And and yes, there'll be reductions in services and I I'm not happy about it, but I hear every day from people who are not happy about big increases in taxes and and it looks like the school tax in fact will be going up, not down. It would be over 3% increase, probably. That's the prediction. So that puts puts us over 10% if we stay at where we are now on top of last year, on top of the year before that. It's just not sustainable. I don't think it is. And I, you know, I understand this pain. I mean, I the last editorial job I had when I started, I had two magazines and seven staff. When I finished, I had seven magazines and eight staff. So I've been through it. And I know what it means. But I don't see this, I don't see us able to do this every year, just 6%, 8%, 10%. It's just, we can't do it. So we have to do something. Could cut a program. What would it be? I haven't heard any ideas. I haven't heard any suggestions. I don't have any. The reason I didn't want to talk about positions specifically is because I want to leave it to the staff who know the day to day and can make those decisions. I think they can make a recommendations on programs. Yes, we would need to approve it, but we didn't get those recommendations. We kind of got what we asked for.
Carrie.
Yeah, I would agree. We got what we asked for, which was do a math problem and come out with a certain amount of reduction. And we're not going to give any direction on what work we want done or we don't want done. We're not going to give you any, any, we're not going to make any policy decisions about what we want to put our, where our priorities are and where we want to put our money. We just want you to do some math and make it all work out the way that we want it to work out. And I I think that's an irresponsible way to do budgeting. I think it's an irresponsible way to, for city counselors to be managing. This is not our role. Our role is to be thinking about policy and direction and saying this is the work that we want done. This is what the priorities are of the city. And net zero is a perfect example of that. The city made a commitment to net zero, recognizing that the, the reason why we are in such a terrible dire situation with climate change is because for generations, people have said, oh, it's kind of expensive and I don't really deal with it. I just wanted to get the short term benefits now. And the city made a commitment to stand up against that and to try to do something differently than that zero. And now we're saying, oh, no, never mind. It's too expensive. We don't want to do it. We're just going to go for the short term, quick. We can say that taxes were lowered and it doesn't really matter that we had this commitment and we're just abandoning it without saying that you want to abandon it. So I don't want to abandon that. I'm not in favor of that. I think we should stick with it. So I think we should keep the sustainability coordinator. And if if the council decides not to fund that position, then I agree with the member of the public who said we need to be honest that it's because we don't value the net zero commitment anymore. And I I don't think that, I I think that, yeah. And I appreciate the staff sharing all of the impacts and the details of the things that will take longer, that will not get done. And we also need to be realistic about the fact that consolidating positions and redistributing workload only goes so far and that it is not possible to just for the remaining, to cut seven people and have the remaining staff just absorb all the rest of the work. And I think there is an idea out there that we have a lot of staff who aren't really working very hard or doing much or something, and surely they could do more. And I, it's not possible. They're not going, they can't do more or they can only do so much more. And then, I mean, I could just, I can, I can see the front porch forum posts now. What's the matter with the city? Why can't they do this? Why can't they, why can't they pick up their trash? Why can't they mow? What's, what's taking so long? And so I would prefer that we stick with the original proposed budget that we got from staff and not implement any of these additional cuts on top of it.
Ellen.
So can you put back the sustainability? I'm persuaded coordinator to do thing and we, maybe we can see the difference. Because I know that if you want all the services and all the responsibilities, it means like 24% tax increase, right? The first kind of brief presentation build it for us. So I'm not sure everybody can pay that much increase a month earlier. So Sarah, can you? It's a little bit, I don't know, maybe because I'm marrying, I cannot be. What's the difference?
Up to 4.77% increase all in for municipal.
And and in that same lot row, that means that the property tax for an average residential property would go up $166?
Uh, yeah, for the municipal portion.
Thank you.
So the difference is 1.2? Is it roughly?
Roughly.
Every 123,000 is about 1%. I wanted to follow up on a technical point. Not going to comment yet on the policy direction, but just to Sal's point about the school budget. I was make sure we're clear. It's not the total of the two. Like if we went up seven and they went up three, it's not a 10%. It's a, well, I thought you, that's what you just said. So it's, then it would be up 10. It's the average, essentially the average of the two. So combined, it would be five. I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, but it's they're, they're together, not, not cumulative, yeah. So I thought I heard you say we're, they're at three, we're at seven and now we're at 10. And so it's would be actually probably less than five because they're bigger half.
Can I continue to? Uh, thank you. So and we also said we want to keep everything for the core services, right? Police Department, Fire and Department of Public Works. So now we receive like a one police position, right? And also like chief talk about what the overshoot.
Yeah.
So can, can we just talk about it? And like, again, I just want to see the difference. Because I thought that we didn't ask from that department anymore, like an additional cuts.
Correct. And and I do understand that and assumed we'd be talking about that, chief. I don't know if you want to come up. The, the difference with that is that was an add back. There, they, we didn't cut anything from what they have now. We were proposing to add a new one in or one back. And so this was just saying, keep them where they are now. So it wasn't reducing the current police department. It was just not. We initially said, let's increase it. So I just, that's as we were trying to figure this out, that was the best we could come up with. But and you know, again, I'd let, I don't want to, I don't want the chief to lose people if we can get them for him, but it's also been really difficult to fill them. So that's been the other piece.
So again, it's, it's the staff recommendation, right? So I don't want to, yeah. I don't want to create very negative effect on that core service.
So Pellen, you raised a question about this, the staffing, this, the 17th officer, which is would be an add, but but you also raised a question about the $25,000 overtime.
Yeah, that's.
And that's a cut.
That's a cut. Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to, yeah, so.
And do you want to see what the impact would be if we put that back in?
Yeah, we can. Why not? It's the discussion, right?
While we're putting that back.
About a quarter of a point.
I'd just like to be clear about the 17, 17th police officer. What, what I understand we've done is we've because it's been difficult to find a hire, we've said we'll put it back if we find somebody, but if we don't, we won't.
Sort of. That's a good point. So what we said was we were having difficulty finding people. We put $50,000 in for community outreach that have been, we had the 17th officer and the community outreach, so mental health outreach. We think we're going to have difficulty finding that. So what we were basically seeing is if we can't get community outreach, $50,000 would buy us roughly half a year of a police officer. So we get the 17th officer, say, in January of next, you know, this time next year for half of the next fiscal year, and then it would be in the budget for the following year. So I think it was.
If you can't get the 50.
Or we could just say we're putting 50 toward a police officer and not do the outreach. I mean, you can do it. Either way, we'd have to assess which was more important. I'll let the chief speak to that.
Again, Eric Ordenson from the Police Department. It's a tricky police market right now, right? And if you're not watching the news, like what's happening in Burlington and different communities, those people might become free agents today and tomorrow. So I'm really nervous to like give it totally up. I think January bought us some time that if the opportunity came that I could get somebody and two or three people were leaving different departments. Keep in mind, that same thing can happen to us too, right? Two or three people. That, that this is a market for police officers. When you ask how much police officers you could be paid, it's going up, it's going up and it's going up because we are so hard to find. So I'm, I'm nervous. I, I'm nervous to not ramp up. And I've, I've been pretty clear with that. I'm, I'm really nervous about what happens. You know, when a couple of us older fellows and girls take off, which isn't that far away. So my plan has always been to make sure that they didn't have a gap in service. And the way things are trending right now, there's definitely going to be a gap of service unless something changes. And I'm just trying as hard as I can to make sure that doesn't happen.
And Burlington is trying to expand, right?
They are, but look at the environment that they're working in, right?
Not easy.
Yeah, no, it's not easy.
They have, they've been trying for a while and they're like 20 below where they want to be, something like that.
Yep. They're, they're significantly below and you know, Berry City's short five. You know, Northfield has a $15,000 sign on bonus for free healthcare. Berlin has free healthcare. You know, we're paying 20%. We are the highest payer of insurance in policing. So when I hear all this stuff, I was like, I can't compete. We could offer a sign on bonus, but I always felt like that's kind of like the cable gimmick, you know, the, the you have the cable, the new cable customer gets the, the great deal and the person that's been loyal all this time gets nothing. So we felt as a, as a management team that it was best to reward the people that were here and create a really good environment as good as we could with training and and community that would have people want to be here, not just for a $15,000 or $20,000 sign on bonus. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
To other city counselors. So I mentioned that and Bill said, no, and I understand the reason in the last meeting, can we just create some kind of between like a maybe halftime position for sustainability and facilitators coordinator and we just, I don't know, I'm just trying to find some way keep like all the positions for future needs, but at the same time create a balance within tax increase. So sorry, I'm asking the same question. Like, can we just like create some, I don't know, flexibility? Because, yeah. I know the answer. I missed something else. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I agree.
So when I, you know, after our last meeting, I went back and just pondered our conversations and around, you know, what Carrie brought up in terms of taxes versus values and you know, I went down this whole rabbit hole of researching, you know, where are we as a city and how, how do we compare to other cities, which Bill's like, it's a slippery slope because it's not comparing apples to apples, which it is not. It's a very, very difficult analysis to do in terms of positions, budgets, healthcare. You know, job descriptions, job titles, every city is different in terms of how they're set up. And so once I was going through that research and Bill alluded to this, I was sent a report that was done in 2012. And so in that report, the city council commissioned a committee of over 20 people over a hundred of hours doing this analysis. And it's like Groundhog Day. We're still talking about the same issues 14 years later. So it's not just a tax increase in 2026. It's cumulative over the past four years that I'm concerned about. And so when we look at this report, I mean, this clearly states our city wants to focus on roads and infrastructure. Like it's exactly what we're talking about today. It's we want, you know, to fix those potholes. We want to fix these roads. We want our water infrastructure fixed. I mean, it is very loud and clear from 2012, what our city wanted 14 years ago. And so, and, and so with that in mind and thinking about where we are now, and they wanted housing. They wanted to add to the grand list. Like it is exactly what we're saying present day of what we wanted 14 years ago. So it's not just about, you know, this tax rate that we're talking about. It's about where we were 14 years ago, where we are today, and how do we really overcome this narrative that has been repeated for 14 years? And how do we get to that point where we do fix our potholes? We do focus on our water infrastructure. I mean, we're making headway, but we haven't thoroughly invested as we should have over the past 14 years. And that's why we're still having this conversation. And I think that's why we're in this very, very difficult position because I mean, I, I feel like if we, you know, I mean, there was probably reasons every single year that we cut the capital plan. We didn't invest in paving. We didn't invest in water infrastructure, but those were difficult conversations that should have been had that didn't. So now we're sitting here looking at these positions of our friends and and neighbors and, you know, values of our organization of net zero. And, you know, I, I think we do really need to make tough decisions because the previous councils didn't. And we're still having these conversations and we haven't made a huge amount of headway because we're still talking about it. And it's our, this is all I hear from my constituents is I want the, you know, the, the roads fixed. I want my water main breaks to stop going. I want housing to be developed. So how do we get there? Like, how do we overcome this burden and this hurdle of having these really difficult conversations, talking about positions being cut while still focused on the values of housing and infrastructure and, and, you know, safety. I, I just feel like we're just going to continue this vicious cycle that I read in this 100 page report from, from 14 years ago, really discouraging.
I'd like to offer a little perspective on that, having, you know, been here all that time. I would submit that every single city council has wrestled with the same thing you're wrestling with. I, I would not say that they made bad decisions. I'd say they were trying to balance the tax rate, the need for services and how much they could afford. If you look back over history, you'll see that well, we're in the third cycle of it. Two prior versions of councils did extended increases of the capital plan, one over about eight years, one for about six years. Now we've started another one. Part of the problem is, is, you know, certainly we've seen in the last few years is that the costs rise. We, we had to make drastic cuts for COVID and drastic cuts for for the flood. So that is our, our current problem. We were catching up to where we needed to be with that. With water and sewer lines, and, and this isn't just for you, Adrian. It's, you know, a lot of people talk about this and, and I think it's important to understand. So, so the city staff brought that issue to the council in the mid 2000s, late 2000s, maybe even 2010s. I can't remember if you go back and look. Recognizing this was a problem and the city council created a committee of themselves and the finance and, and to figure out how we could address our water and sewer infrastructure. And their conclusion at the time was that to do what needed to be done would require raising water and sewer rates so high that they didn't want to do it until the, the bonds for those water treatment plant fell off, which is about now. And so they created what we call the 50 year plan that can to add 1% for infrastructure on top of the budget, which we have been doing every, every year since. So they knew what they were doing. It wasn't like they, they were like, we can't afford to do this now, but we can see a, a path in the future to do this. So we're going to create a plan. We're going to fund it. And then we've been adding to it in the budget. And hopefully we're going to get $2 million of federal money. So, so yes, we're behind in the water plants, you know, I, someone mentioned that in 1993. They were talking about that. I don't know. That was before my time, but I do know that we were building a new water treatment plant. It wasn't built till after I was here. And so the city councils at that time said it's more important for us to have clean, safe, healthy water than the water that was contaminated going through brand new pipes. So they made a priority decision at that time to build our treatment plant, clean the water and then deal with the pipes. And, you know, I wasn't here for that, but I would say they made the right call then and it would be the right call today. So now we're dealing with the pipes. So I get it. It's, it's difficult and we, we offer a wide array of, of services and, you know, people want rec and they want the senior center and they want the parks and the trails and they want good police and they want fire. Um, the parks and the trails and they want good police and they want fire. All of those are costs that compete with the capital needs. They want housing. We've, you know, we have our planning department. We didn't touch them because they are doing all the housing. We've purchased. You know, we have been trying to be innovative. We could give you a long list. The public, a long list of things that have been done. But every council's wrestled with this decision and and they've come down where they've come down. And some have come down harder on cutting costs and some, you know, and raising more in infrastructure, and some have come down. Harder, you know, more on the side of delivering more programs and services. It's but. They've all had the same, they've all had the same conversation because those are the same issues. It's. What do we wanna propose? What what is the, what's the right balance of all of this? And that's what we struggle with every winter. And um, and that is what they were struggling. I went through it where I'm actually writing an update. The one thing that I found in that report. And in the matrix report that it was based upon, and yes, they are eleven, you know, they're years old, but. We're still talking about them, right? Is they didn't say, here's really obvious places to cut. Here's where all the waste is. Uh, you should just stop these programs and you should stop these things. It was, gee, you gotta find a way. Gee, you should. Really work to cut costs. There were a lot of that and not a, we found these inefficiencies. We keep. We keep digging into those all all the time, trying to do them. Um. So I I get it, but um. I I I'm not, I can't sit here. And have it said that prior people made bad decisions. Or that they would made the wrong ones, or they avoided them because they didn't, they confronted the same conversations that, and and we as staff do. You know, we're trying to get it right. We we got told to cut four hundred and nine thousand dollars. We didn't say. Cut a certain program or don't cut a certain, I asked a lot of times, what guidance can you give? And it was don't cut police fire and public works. And we've tried to stay as true to that as we can. And still deliver everything that we're delivering. And come within the numbers. And is it perfect? No, of course it's not perfect. I mean, this honestly, the six point nine four percent, I realize it's high, but that wasn't perfect. There's still, look, a lot of these cuts we talked about were in that budget. So. We understand, we 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 struggle with this. I mean, the stuff that we cut before you you and every other council ever see it. Is um. Is very difficult because we know. And they know, the folks you just heard from, that they're gonna be called upon to deliver the work. And um, and yes, they're gonna be called on fix the broken water line, and they're gonna be called upon to pave the road too, but they're also gonna be called upon to plow the road. And to, you know, do make sure that the clean water is running and that the sewage treatment plan is functioning and that. The the fire calls and ambulance calls are running. And um, so, yeah, I I I'm sorry for the rant, but I I think it's really important. As we're at this really tough time. You know, where we're at is where we have been a lot of times. It's just a whole heck of a lot worse this year because of the. That sort of confluence of financial situations we find ourselves in. So it's, the stakes are much higher. But it's the same.
Follow the brand. I guess the thought would be. We do want those basic services to maintain. And yes, when we call for an ambulance, we all want the ambulance to show up with skilled people to help. Um, but we have to look at, and in this budget, no matter which version we take. They're gonna be, taxpayers are gonna have to understand, this isn't what any of us want, and you're gonna get fewer services. And and we're gonna have to say no. And businesses, even though like your earlier analysis, um. We've all had to cut back and make changes. Um, and if we don't, we don't get paid, we can't pay our taxes. So in the public sector, people just keep asking, and there's, and the people working there trying their best to provide the services, but we have to contain it. We just have to. So maybe if there isn't always somebody there to stamp the tax bill when they make their payment of. You know, it's a wonderful archaic thing. But. It really doesn't add value for anyone, and unfortunately, those kind of pieces are gonna be lost.
Yeah, and I understand that. We understand that, and we understand. This prod- problem, and we're trying to find a number. Our job is to make sure you all have been briefed. On what the potential impacts of your decisions are before you make them and decide if those are acceptable or not. You, at the end of the day, you make, not us.
Yeah.
You decide where the priorities are, how much to fund. All we can do is say, we're here to deliver. The services that you choose, at the level that you choose, at the funding level that you choose, and we need to make sure that you're, we're all doing this with open eyes. And once you tell us what it is. We'll we'll do the best we can to make it work. But. We wanna make sure we've had this conversation now, so when the front porch forum post comes or when the person is in front of our council. In August complaining about something that. At least the five of you that are still here are saying, yeah, you know, we knew that, we made that decision last winter, and that's the way it is and. You know, we've got the staff's back on that. We, you know, can't be hung out the dry, saying, oh, I don't know why they're not doing that, you know.
I can just, maybe I can wrap up. Basically, what I was thinking is. I mean, we're certainly. I think the staff, you all did what we asked you to do, and we really appreciate that you've done the analysis, um. It it's not, it's a budget that's gonna take, if if it goes, um. You know, you're not gonna be able to support thirty committees. And and we've talked about committees before, but the number of committees that have to be supported is gonna have to be reduced. I mean, there's just so many layers of this. Um, it it, but then that's one example, I. I guess, so anyway, to cut to the chase, I think the budget is proposed, um, with the last group of. Of cuts and adjustments, the total four oh nine four, which I believe in the. Um. The notice that's in in our agenda tonight specifies it's a budget of twelve million one hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Um, after these adjustments are made.
Uh, that's the municipal tax portion after other revenues and exclusive of the valid items.
Okay. So to make a motion to approve budget as proposed with these changes. Would that would be the number?
That's the amount we need to raise, correct?
Correct. Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? And Tim, before we go any further. On this, because uh, we need to. Split that motion into two.
Okay.
Take, we need to take the city clerks portion out to make that a separate motion.
So how do we do that? Can we just make the motion saying pull the city clerk's budget out?
We move all portions of the budget as proposed, except the city clerks.
Yeah. So that's the motion.
Yes.
As seconded, the 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 budget. Except for the city clerk's budget. A- as as proposed to the tonight or coming into tonight. Um. And it's been moved and seconded. Is there, are there any proposals for uh for any amendments to that? Because we have heard, uh. Some discussion tonight of uh. The sustainability coordinator and the seventeenth police officer, Lauren.
Proposed amendment that we add back in the facilities and sustainability coordinator.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is is there any discussion of that motion?
Uh, I would like to avoid adding things back in incremental way. If we're gonna add, I'd like to get them all into one motion and then decide. That way. Are there, are there any other additions that councils wanna make?
Well, I I don't know that it makes any sense, but um. You know, if my my proposal would be that we don't accept any of these cuts that came into us today, so, but I don't think. Uh, procedurally, it makes sense for me to propose an amendment. With the motion because it's contrary to what the motion is actually saying.
I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be in order because it would just be to negate the entire motion.
Right.
So, Sal, I I understand what you're saying. However. We have a motion for the budget as it is, and so. The way you get back to, the way you make a change to that is by moving changes to that. And this may or may not be the only. Change, but there could be people who want, who would support. This, this add back, but not other add backs. And so I think the only way you can do that is by taking them one at a time. So is there, we've had, we've talked about it a lot. Is there any further discussion or are we ready to just vote on this? All right, let's vote on it. Um. All those in favor of the motion, and this is to amend the uh main motion by adding back. One hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars for the sustainability and. Facility coordinator. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you vote aye?
Yeah.
And so. Did you vote aye also? All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. So now the motion has been amended to add back the one forty-one. Eight twenty-seven. Is there, are there any other motions to amend? Are we ready to vote on the main motion? If so. And and the. The bottom line now is. Is what? Okay, um. Four point seven seven percent and we, and the dollar amount, you're, are you just gonna fill in the dollar amount before I, okay.
You gotta, you gotta do it again next week.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, this is the.
So. Well, that we're voting for the motion.
Your motion as amended.
Okay.
The main, yeah, the main motion. Because I asked for, I asked if there were any other amendments. No one else moved an amendment.
So we are. Four point seven to seven, right?
Right, the full, the full budget.
Okay.
As proposed, setting aside the city council, the city clerk.
Yeah.
So everybody know what we're voting on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so the uh. It's three to three. Is that, is that right? No?
No, it's.
Is it four to two?
Yeah, four to two.
Okay. And the motion carries. I was, wait, four to two, no? Okay. I was having a hard time hearing who is doing what. I probably should have asked people to uh, probably should have done a roll call. All right. Two to four, yes. So no. So it's a two yes, four no. Let's get, have people raise their hands to be clear. Who voted yes?
So I said yes for this four point seventy-seven.
Right, how many people vote yes to that? Okay, and how many people vote no? Okay. All right, so we're gonna stay here. Um. Until we uh, we have a budget, so. Who has a proposal to make? Lauren.
Changed my vote to send this to next week. And I mean, people could think about further, but since it seems like. Two people are voting because they want it to be lower, and two people are voting against it because they want it to be higher, this. Might move the conversation forward if. I I don't know that we're gonna come to an agreement tonight on somewhere in the middle or something, but it wouldn't then give us, for example, the. Funds necessarily to restore a position, so I don't know what that gets us.
Hmm.
So.
So you wanna move, change your vote?
I mean, does anyone have, I don't wanna preclude if anyone has any. Ideas or alternative motions that might get us somewhere different, but.
I think because I said yes, I wanna hear from people who said no, because I'm okay with this. Approved budget. So I don't know what are the alternatives. Because they were, they were like, no.
Okay.
My quick reaction is, it seems like, at least for. Part of the town that I'm involved in, where I pay parts that I pay the bills for over the property taxes. It never seems to quite line up with the percentages we have at these meetings and what I think my tax bills go up when I actually have to get them and have to pay them. Um, and I think as I look at this package and say, okay, so if it was three point six two after all the cuts, which. We're not at the moment, but. For like the core downtown area and areas that are still pretty vulnerable. We're also not um, doing the sprinkler credits, which is effectively an increase for those properties. And contrary to what Bill has said a few times, not all the owners that have sprinklers in buildings have to have them in them. A number of us have put them in by choice to make our buildings safer. If we built a new building and we had to put it in, yeah, we'd have to do it. But no, I think there's, we've done several and.
No, no, I mean, I think you can check on what. The the I, the goal was to.
But it's an increase in taxes on properties.
The goal was to waive the credit for those that have to have them. So I think we could look at the people that put them in voluntarily that aren't required, we could take a look.
Anyway, but I just, the way I'm looking at this budget, the way I'm understanding it, it's an increase for. The downtown properties for the people that have done the right thing. Um, and those that haven't, just get away with not doing it. Um, and then the other piece is the downtown assessment district. It's, it stayed pretty low and under the radar over the years. But again, it's also another increase on that same group of properties. In in a really vulnerable part of town, where we've got a lot of apartments for some, some of our lower rent apartments and a lot of people that are in town that don't have cars. Um, and and that's the place we're gonna be. Piling it on, and we're gonna be having to raise their rents. Um, it just, I, there's just not a balance in this thing for me. Now, I know there's not a balance in a lot of ways for a lot of people, so I appreciate that. But I do think that the number we're talking about, the four point seven seven or three point six two or whatever, it's. It's more than that. And I'm just trying to. Brace for that, because we've had a few years of big increases already. Water and sewer rates do go up every year at a percent more than CPI, which is a good plan. But it's still, it's a, it's also another significant increase every year. Um, and and they all have to be absorbed.
Did anyone else who was a no vote want to want to uh? Take Palin's uh invitation to explain where you're coming from? And you don't have to, of course. Lauren.
I mean, again, if someone's having some inspiration for another plan, I mean, I, I'm just still concerned with. Like, the seventeenth officer, or like some of the cuts especially that came in tonight. I think are problematic. Um, so that's why, so I. And, but I will. Do I do a motion to reconsider? Or how do I, do I just do a new motion with like?
That's a good question.
Um, because I, I was on the winning side, so I think, well, I don't know. Could reconsider my vote?
Well, we could ask the parliamentarian.
You think that that it has to be somebody from the, the winning side can make a request, um. And I don't know if it has to be within this meeting.
It does.
That's what I thought, yeah. So I think, I think that that is the way to do it. It needs to be within this meeting, needs to be someone who is on the winning side can. Call for reconsideration of the motion.
Alright.
So is that your motion?
So I do a motion to reconsider my vote.
Reconsider that action.
Reconsider that action.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. You have to decide, you have to vote to decide whether you're gonna have a revote. And then we would have the revote, right? Because that's, that's what we're doing.
Vote on what?
On, on the motion that just failed. Tim's motion is amended.
The four point seven seven, right?
Okay, so the motion is. Should the uh council reconsider? The vote, uh. That defeated Tim's uh motion. Now. So a vote yes is to give you a chance to reconsider, a vote no is to not. Well, for those who vote, I'm gonna go down the line. Uh, Lauren.
Yes.
Palin.
Yes.
Tim.
No.
Sal.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Adrian.
Yes.
All right. Now. You have voted to reconsider the motion. Now the motion before the House is. To re-adopt a budget at the uh, at the level that Tim uh. to adopt a budget at the uh at the level that Tim uh moved or or the as amended. So that's the four point seven seven percent.
Minus the clerk.
Minus the clerk, minus the first budget, yep. And we'll do the same. We'll call the roll. Uh, Lauren.
Yes.
Oh, did did anyone want to have any more debate on that? I I I think we're where we need to be, but go ahead if if anyone has.
Just just want to make clear. I mean, I continue to have concerns about this budget, but this gives us something to talk about. Next week, we'll have another public hearing. If people have additional ideas or anything, we still have another chance to do some final refining on it, but this allows us to, if nobody's having any like brainstorms tonight, then we don't have to just keep sitting here and staring at each other. So this is why I'm moving it forward. Um, and I think it's, you know, getting within a ballpark. I'm hoping a majority of council can support incentive voters. Um, so that's why I'm going to vote yes.
Helen.
Yes.
Tim. Sal, no. Carrie.
No.
Adrian.
Yes.
So now it is three to three. And uh I do not think this is a responsible budget, but I will vote yes to break the tie because I think that we need to move forward to uh to next week with but with something to put before the voters. Now, the chair would entertain a motion to fund the uh city clerks uh office at the uh at the requested uh level. Uh, and uh councillor uh Brown will not participate.
I will recuse myself from this discussion and this vote.
Is there a mo- is there that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um. So now that's where we are. Before we move on to the to the remainder of the agenda, which which isn't much, but before I I just want to observe that uh that part of the reason that I think we're kind of at a at a standoff or uh or we're really stuck is that we're being told that we have these cuts being proposed as a way of right restructuring or right sizing our city government. But we're making cuts without making plans. Less than a year ago, the city council spent months reviewing the operations of all our departments and then unanimously adopted our current priorities. Maybe it's true that plans exist to be changed with the circumstances, but that does not mean saying no to circuit services and people without knowing what is necessary and what is the best way to provide those services. We'll be here after town meeting day, and we will once again gather and hold meetings to discuss to develop our council priorities. If there's sufficient support for it, we can begin to study right then of the structure and functions of city government. We've done it before and we can do it again. But until we have done that, I do not think we should be cutting our budget just to make cuts. And I think that we're going to, we may be facing the same problems of moving forward with the with the sensible budget next week. Um, because because we haven't confronted that the fundamental question. But that's that's a discussion for next week. Um, we will move to council reports. Adrian.
We have to have the first public hearing on the warning.
Okay. Oh, okay. I I was thinking of that. That was the it says, okay.
That was the budget.
Okay, item eight, public uh first public hearing on the warning. I will open the public hearing.
So every year we have a warning that voters vote on. Uh, there's a draft of the warning in your uh in your packets and online. It's pretty standard to uh what we have every year. Obviously, the the school district budget, we don't have their numbers yet. You're still finalizing your number. Uh, the number that's on that paper was the based on the budget we came in with today, so that would change for next week. Uh, everything else is really the same except for Article eleven does reflect the new um funding for the downtown improvement district. And uh we have the the ballot items, moving the the community fund to the ballot. Uh, and then lastly, you had voted to um add uh the the tax stabilization expansion authorization uh onto the warning earlier this year. So that is on as Article seventeen. So call that out because that's, you know, it's specific based on an earlier vote that you had taken. Um, but obviously you can still choose to add it or take it off. So basically, this is like your first reading. You get any comment that you want about these ballot items, and then you'll have to approve the final ballot next week, um along with any petitions that have new petitions that have come in.
Is there any comment from the public on the uh on the construction of the warning?
Kind of.
I'll make a brief comment that I think that doing o- opening a public hearing at nine thirty at night is part of this charade of engagement. Uh, you're going through the motions and nobody understands in the public viewing public that the implications or what they should have paid attention to or even comment on. And it's just it's reckless, it's irresponsible.
Is there any other member of the public in the room or on Zoom who would like to make a comment in this public hearing?
And there will be another public hearing on the warning and the ballot budget next week.
All right, I will uh close the public hearing. And now the chair would entertain a motion to approve the uh draft warning. Or do we approve or move it to another second public hearing? So the motion is to uh hold the second uh public hearing on the draft warning. So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks. Thank you, Bill. Um, now uh city council reports. Um, Adrian.
Um, I mean.
Carrie.
Um, I just want to um acknowledge all the the folks out in California who have lost their lives and lost their homes and thousands and thousands of people who um and communities that are just completely destroyed and no real end in sight. So I'm just thinking about them sending, I don't know. Just wanted to acknowledge that.
So. Tim. Helen.
No report.
Lauren.
Um, I just wanted to let folks know that um I'm going to be wrapping up my council term and I'm not going to be seeking reelection. Um, it's been a real honor to serve for the past six years, really grateful to um folks who elected me to represent you all and the work that be able to work with the council and the city staff. And I can share reflections my last meeting, but just wanted to let folks know and thank everyone.
Thanks, Lauren. Um, don't have much of a mayor's report. You've heard a lot from me tonight. I what I will say, I think it's important to say is that uh we have heard allegations tonight that uh our uh city staff is uh is ineffective and at the at and it's we have problems with people who are just coasting toward retirement. And I just have to say, from my perspective, having worked with the city staff um as an advocate, as a council member and as mayor, that I think that is just uh false, unfair and disrespectful to our city staff who I I've found constantly have done uh great work under uh difficult circumstances. And I do not want to hear people uh denigrating uh their work. Um, we are up to uh city clerk.
Yeah, just a reminder that uh next Thursday at five o'clock is the deadline for ballot petitions for ballot questions to come in. And then the following Monday at five is the deadline for candidates. And also a reminder, because people, I've I've had people come to me because they've forgotten this about positions on the ballot that in uh opelier or as per the charter for city positions, positions on the ballot are drawn by lots. Um, so just just to try to get in front of that question a little bit this time, I've had uh in fact, when I ran the first time, uh, there was uh I I was second in alphabetical order, but I ended up getting drawn to be at the top. There was some pushback about that. So that happens sometimes. Just a reminder.
Will we be uh warning a meeting of the Board of Civil Authority for that Monday at five or five fifteen?
Yes, in fact, that warning will go out Monday.
Great. City manager's report?
Uh, just for again, remind everyone, we'll be back uh next week. Um, I think we're at the senior center next week. Is is that right? Yeah, the council uh school board's in this room. Uh, so upstairs at the senior center, it is um elevator accessible. Um, and then I think it sounded like everybody could do February fifth for a special meeting for my review. That seemed from what I heard, so confirming that and we'll go forward with that. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, folks. And uh we are adjourned at nine forty-six P M.